To go, give me the sign. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome, and my apologies, our executive session went rather long this evening, as you can, are well aware. Let's open our meeting with the traditional pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, prior to the meeting, the board met in executive session. This was to consider litigation strategy with respect to a petition of ever sourced energy, to consider purchase, sale, lease, or value of real property, to discuss strategies with respect to contract negotiations, and to discuss strategies with respect to contract negotiations with non-union employees, as an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the bargaining positions of the board. So with apologies for the delay, we will start off by opening the meeting to our usual public forum where residents are invited to share ideas or ask questions regarding town government. Is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight? Mr. Harrow, please come up.
So it was probably a month ago that I came before you. It was a very busy night, and I had three things I wanted to talk about, and I cut it short. And so tonight, it's been a very busy night, and we haven't only just gotten started, and I don't feel like I can talk about all three things again. So I'm gonna cut it short, so you get to see me again some point. So, having said that, firstly, the thing I got to speak about the last time, and there was some question, and no one within the board seemed to know what I was talking about, I went to Concom meeting next, like I will be going next after this, and that's where I learned what it was all about, so that my source was correct. And I will leave it at that, because I'm sure everyone knows now about what I was talking about. Yes?
Possibly.
Okay, possibly. We'll leave it go at that. And I'm not gonna let the bike lanes go this time. So the bike lanes, and I will entrust you to pass those around, there's only five copies, but you can grab one if you want on the way by. The bike lanes are these wonderful things designed by DOT, and we all think they're the greatest things since, well, not we all, greatest things since fried bread. So those are the DOT standards for storm drains. And you'll notice two things circled in red, one of which is the gutter. And so when they're aligned with the gutter, you can tell they therefore become aligned with the direction of travel. You with me?
You had this one other time, and Mr. Westerling fixed it for you, 'cause you nearly got killed.
Yes, 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 absolutely. I'm not complaining about Hopkinton. This is a statement about DOT. Now, if there's any question, I have ten pictures of what happens when one is on a bicycle, and the storm drains are like that. And maybe you'd be so kind as to pass those around too. So DOT clearly doesn't know what they're doing with respect to bicycle safety. If it's the latest, 2017, they're saying, "That's how you put those storm drain grates in." If one has no confidence in DOT's knowledge about bicycle safety with storm drain grates, I have no confidence in their knowledge of designing bike lanes, is my point.
Can I ask you, Ed, we don't have any like this in the town, do we? Or was there one or two, and you identified it, Mr. Westerling corrected?
There was, this one I can recollect, it was at Lumber and Granite Street, and within 24 hours of me pointing it out, it was fixed.
Because ours are all like this.
No, they're not. There are some that are parallel, and John or David, I'm sure, could point out where they are.
Have you either looked at or consulted with Mr. Westerling about the plan downtown corridor, to see what kind of, to see what their plans are, and make sure, so we can, like he can be alert that this not be put in? I mean, he's crazy.
My, my point here is not that they're gonna have storm drain grates like this in the middle of the bike lanes. My point is that I do not believe that DOT understands the needs of people riding bicycles.
Obviously.
The, any, anything you look at, and I got stuff you can look at, but we're running out of time, and I don't wanna use it all up. Everything that comes out of mass DOT that shows bike lanes, the one universal thing you can count on, besides bicycles and people and trees and things like that, is they're flat. Hopkinton is not flat. On my bike, just coasting down the hill, not pedaling, starting at the bank, 17 miles an hour by the time I got to the drugstore, turning. If somebody's coming down that hill at 17 miles an hour, just coasting along, someone pulling out of a driveway, he's gonna look right, they're gonna look left, and then they're gonna be looking left, 'cause that's where the traffic's coming from. And someone's gonna get smacked. And I've said enough for now, I'll be back later. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else who'd like to follow Ed?
Ed, I can tell you, Ed.
Ed, Ed!
I can tell you that the town of Hopkinton circa 1989 was well ahead of your curve here. I'd been hitting the head with a shovel by Cook-Cumlin more than once when we were cleaning catch basins by not putting them back in the same way. So, sweet dreams.
Okay. Well, if there are no other takers for our public forum, we will move on to the first item on our agenda, which is staff recognition. And the Board of Selectmen will recognize tonight DPW Heavy Equipment Operator James Russ Lukey for his 30 years of service as of October 11, 2018, working for the town of Hopkinton. Russ, you are here?
I am.
Please come up.
Come on up.
What a wonderful honor. Congratulations. I bet the town has changed a little since you started.
Certainly is. Certainly is.
Bet your Brendan's changed a little since then.
Oh, yeah. Not much.
Both of us.
But, well, I think it's just great that you've been here with us so long, and I know your, your wife, Eileen, probably shares in our honor in having someone who's been such a long, dedicated, faithful, and effective employee, and I'm sure the job hasn't gotten any easier for you, but obviously, we're doing something right to have kept all this time.
Yep. I'm glad you're alive and stay here 30 years.
We are honored that you have. I don't mean to hog it, but are there any, any other comments for the board? We have a lovely commendation for you. It's got gold on it, but not, not 24 karat, 'cause we are budget conscious here in town. But, other board members?
I would like to go last.
You'd like to go last?
Yes.
Well, who would like to go second? Anybody?
So this is celebrating 30 years of service to the town as a heavy equipment operator, but this isn't the end of 30 years of service to the town, is it? We're not celebrating retirement here this evening.
Not going anywhere.
I'm sorry?
I'm retiring Friday.
Okay, that's what I'm not clear about, so.
Oh, that's, that's not such good news.
Yeah, okay. Well, in that case, then it's a whole nother level of thank you for your years. Thirty years of service to Hopkinton's fantastic. I hope your retirement is another 30 years of fantastic service to your family and yourself. You've earned it all, and we're gonna miss you, and we really appreciate everything you've done for the town. Thanks for coming tonight, too.
Thank you.
But, yeah, I thought it might be a retirement, and that's, that's, that's great, but it's also a little sad for the town, too.
Yeah. I thought it was gonna be like a 30-year pin, and then you're working towards, you're working towards 40 or something.
No. Not gonna happen.
So did you, did you train somebody to take your place?
Sitting in the back of the room.
Beautiful. Excellent. That's a world.
Tall, big shoes to fill, back there.
Yeah, that's it, 'cause that's, you know, that's always a hard thing for ourselves, you know, when we, when, when a police officer's retired, and some of the firefighters retired, you know, and, and we're bringing in all these, all this, this young blood and everything else, it's scary for me, 'cause it's not gonna be my rankings. But, but really, we appreciate 30 years hanging with us, and watching the town change and grow. A lot of DPW facility.
Love it.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for all your, your help and dedication.
Say thank you, I mean, it's an honor to have you here for 30 years. I think you're leaving, right as, right as we got the new DPW building, it's, I think that should give you a little more emphasis in sticking around a bit. Just to enjoy it. You know, my wife and I joke.
I'm referring to that Friday date.
My wife and I joke about, you know, with the new marathon school, it's so beautiful, we wish, maybe we should have another kid, so we can get a little advantage on that. Just throwing it out there for you, but, thank you. We really appreciate you being here, and everything you've done for this town.
Thank you.
So Russ, or for the people that don't know you, it's Russ Spider. I have, so it needs to be noted that Russ is, he put 30 years in here. He put probably close to that amount of time in on the fire department. His brothers are both retired town employees that have worked here for forever, and they've all retired. His grandfather started Farrar's Fire Truck Company, which is now, went to Murphy's, which then went to now Bulldog. So Russ is one of those fixtures in town, and we're gonna keep this at a PG level. Russ and I have had a lot of fun over a lot of years. But this is a, this is one of those things where the town's losing someone that worked here for 30 years, but he's, they're losing somebody that can drive down East Main Street and say, when there's a snowstorm coming, saying, "That culvert's gonna be open," 'cause if it isn't, that whole East Main Street's gonna flood. So we lose a lot more than just a guy who knows how to run a loader, or run a backhoe, or drink a lot of coffee, or, or any of that. So Russ has been a very good friend of mine for a very long time. We will miss him tremendously as an employee. I know he doesn't live in town anymore, but, you know, I will miss the, I already missed the nights at the tap, I missed the nights at the gun club, and I wish you, from the bottom of my heart, the best of, best of times during your retirement. You've earned it. Sit back and have a couple of Fresca's and think about Bud Terry while you're throwing them back.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, buddy. Thank you. Congratulations.
So Russ, I guess this is bittersweet. I didn't realize the retirement that went with it. But thank you from the entire town, and congratulations. And we would like to present you with the certificate of appreciation, and let's take it as a photo op up here under the town, town quilt. Congratulations.
It's not for Lucas.
Thank you.
All right, you good?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm enjoying the retirement. I can tell you bad stories, right?
No.
Could've been a lot worse.
That's forever. Put it on.
Okay. Oh, it's not? Even though it's not? Oh, dear.
Yeah, it wasn't supposed to be.
Uh-oh, okay, well.
Oh, does it work?
I'm trying it on.
The light's.
Oh, the light doesn't work, but it's on.
It's on now.
Okay.
Testing, testing.
Maybe 'cause I pushed them on.
Testing, testing.
Okay.
Red is on.
Okay. We have two items tonight on the board's consent agenda. They are, item number one, board minutes. The board will consider approving the October 16, 2018 Board of Selectmen minutes. And item two is a parade permit. The Board of Selectmen will consider approving a parade permit from Sandy Lukeyzi on behalf of RE/MAX Executive Realty Charitable Foundation for its annual 5K road race to be held on Saturday, November 17, 2018, beginning and ending at Hopkinton Country Club. Expected number of participants, 150. And I see Sandy is here to answer any questions. Would anyone on the board like to pull out for individual discussion either of these items? Everybody's happy?
I'll make a motion that we.
Request a motion, then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we can, we approve the board minutes for 10, 16, 18, and approve the parade permit for Sandy Lukeyzi on behalf of RE/MAX Executive Realty Charitable Foundation.
Seconded.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, it is unanimous. And what am I, you are saying, what, they're not? Turn his mic on. Say something, John.
I'll test it again. I knew it wasn't working.
Can't get it by him, he's an engineer.
Can we just move that, does that, is that mic live? Can we just put, move that over maybe to the desk for John?
Did we vote on that? I think we did. Yeah, we voted.
We did.
Sandy, you're all set. What's the problem?
John's mic's not working, so we'll give him a desk mic.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, moving along. Board and committee appointments. The Board of Selectmen will consider making the following appointments. Well, let's take these one at a time. Number one is the, oh, they're both historical commission, excuse me. Two appointments to the Historical Commission. Christine Remby to full member position for a term expiring on June 30, 2019, and also to the Historical Commission, James Haskins to associate member position, term expiring June 30th, 2020. And I believe, am I correct, Mr. Camalo, that the full position for Christine is to fill the resigned position of Ms. Dr. Yankee?
Correct.
Correct. Is Christine here? Christine, come up and say hi. I know Christine applied quite a while back, and she and Beth Watson were both made associate members for a while, so you've been attending the meetings and enjoying it?
Yep, for almost a year now. It was back in December. It wasn't exactly what I thought, but it turned out to be a really good experience, and I enjoy it quite a lot. So I was looking to become a full member.
And my recollection, Christine, was you have some roots in Hopkinton, too. You have, you're, I remember, Remby, was that your grandma?
Yes. So both my parents were born and raised in Hopkinton, and my grandparents also lived in Hopkinton as well.
Just out of curiosity, how was it not what you expected to be? Is that a good or a bad thing?
Um, it's a good thing. I, I don't really know what I expected, but it was an eye-opener as to how things happen in the town, and certain steps to take, so I'm really learning a lot and enjoying it.
Does the board have any questions?
So the Historical Commission is town-wide.
Correct.
Correct. And how many members are on that board today?
Well, the board is to have seven members, and as you may recall, last year when Mr. Sostari was still here, we had several very qualified applicants. We had Mr. Sonnet, we had Christine, and we also had Beth Watson, and we only had one opening. And we decided to create two associate member positions, because we just didn't wanna lose all these qualified people. So Beth has recently moved into one of the full-time spots when that opened up, and now a second has opened up. And it's something we hadn't done before, but I think it's very nice that we offer sort of a training opportunity for people to get their feet wet, and everybody try each other on for size.
In this position, Christine will fill only the, the one position that's currently open for a full member, and then James would fill the only position open for an associate member, is that correct?
Right. Well, there would not be another associate member right now. That, those are both newly created positions. So Christine's position is one of the full member positions, one of the full seven.
Right.
So James would be replacing her.
And then there's two associates, and 'cause she's moving up, so then James is filling her spot?
No, no. Yes, yes, excuse me, James, but, I mean, there's nothing that says we have to have two associates. We simply created those two associates.
And there's only one associate right now, and that's Chris, today's Christine. I got it.
That was Christine. Slide her over and continue with another associate.
Perfect. I'm all set.
All right. Is there a motion, please, to appoint Christine Remby as a full member of the Historical Commission? It would be Dr. Yankee's term, which will expire this, this coming June, June 30th, 2019.
With that, may I say, just moved.
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, that is unanimous. Thank you for being willing to step up, Christine.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And James. So now we understand what we're talking about. James would be new to the board. He would take one of those associate positions. We've talked to James before, he's got a ton of background in Hopkinton history and interest, and I didn't mean to steal your thunder, James, but give us a quick rundown, thumbnail sketch for those watching at home.
Send this thunder before. I made a volunteer at Hopkinton Historical among the board of members, and I've gotten involved with Mike Rowan with the Historic Commission. So I've been attending meetings without any position, so I have an understanding of what's going on. And I'm also researching Hopkinton and the surrounding area for the earlier inhabitants and their ancestral grounds. So I find a lot of ceremonial sites in the Hopkinton area.
Cool. Perfect.
Okay, sounds good. It's nice we've got these people that are coming up through the ranks, this opportunity, so.
If there's nobody else, I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Haskins to an associate member position expiring 6/30/20.
Seconded.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that is unanimous. Thank you for being willing to step up, Christine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And James. So now we understand what we're talking about. James would be new to the board. He would take one of those associate positions. We've talked to James before, he's got a ton of background in Hopkinton history and interest, and I didn't mean to steal your thunder, James, but give us a quick rundown, thumbnail sketch for those watching at home.
Send this thunder before. I made a volunteer at Hopkinton Historical among the board of members, and I've gotten involved with Mike Rowan with the Historic Commission. So I've been attending meetings without any position, so I have an understanding of what's going on. And I'm also researching Hopkinton and the surrounding area for the earlier inhabitants and their ancestral grounds. So I find a lot of ceremonial sites in the Hopkinton area.
Cool. Perfect.
Okay, sounds good. It's nice we've got these people that are coming up through the ranks, this opportunity, so.
If there's nobody else, I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Haskins to an associate member position expiring 6/30/20.
Seconded.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that is unanimous, and thank you for.
Thank you.
Sticking with us, Jim, and coming back. Congratulations.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Now, a little bit behind schedule, but at 7 o'clock, now at 7:15, we have the honor of hearing a presentation from the Foundation for Metro West. The Executive Director Judy Salerno and Jay Kim, Chief Operating Officer of the Foundation for Metro West, will give a brief presentation on the works of the Foundation for Metro West, which connects philanthropic opportunity with demonstrated need. The Foundation is working with the Hopkinton Country Club Charitable Foundation, as well as the Hopkinton Center for the Arts, on a youth in philanthropy program. So welcome, Judy, and also welcome, I gotta catch this, Mr. Kim. Tell us a little about the foundation.
Great, well, thank you very much for allowing us to have a little bit of your time this evening. We represent the Foundation for Metro West, which, as you point out, we are a charitable organization. We're based in South Natick, but our mission is actually to provide philanthropic support for a 33 community area, including Hopkinton. And we wanted to just talk a little bit about some of the work we've been doing in the region, and specifically in Hopkinton, because in addition to being a community foundation, one of the things we do is to actually provide a number of different services and programs to support communities in a pretty wide range of ways through, through our charter as a community foundation. So the foundation was founded in 1995 by a group of local citizens who felt that the philanthropic needs of this region were not being met by larger charitable organizations in either the city of Boston or Worcester, and that there really needed to be an effort to build a source of philanthropy for this region. What we do is we are continuing to build our sources of philanthropy and an endowment and programs to promote local philanthropy in the region, to encourage people to think about their philanthropic commitment to this region. We connect local donors with needs that exist in the region, and we do a tremendous amount of work helping all of the nonprofits that serve the region increase the impact of their work through educational programming. We are a staff of 11, and we are governed by a Board of Trustees, a volunteer Board of Trustees of 17 local business and community leaders, who help us build the resources and build the capacity of the organization.
I would just point out, one of our staff members is a Hopkinton resident, as well as one of our trustees.
As well as one of our trustees, yep. And just to give you a sense of the scope of the work that we're doing regionally, in 2017, we invested nearly $2 million in the Metro West region. 1.5 million of that was through grant-making programs. The remainder of it was through educational programs focused on youth and on nonprofit capacity building. The, as the foundation manages charitable assets of just over $23 million, and since our inception, we have invested over $15 million in the Metro West region. We manage our charitable assets to sustain long-term growth and stability in, in ensuring that the, the principle of the fund is here forever. So we expect to be here forever, and the work that we're doing in the community is work to build this resource, not just for what we can do in the community today, but that we, we want to ensure that this region has a community foundation that has the capacity to address issues that are going to arise that none of us actually can foresee. And so we are a permanent source of philanthropy for the region. The way we do it, and it's a little technical, but, but we do it through a number of different funds. Right now, we manage 130 different funds. Some of those are donor-advised funds, where we're working with individuals and families. We work with businesses, helping them in their charitable giving through business-advised funds. We manage nonprofit agency funds, where nonprofits who have accumulated some capacity to establish a fund to help them in their own sustainability. We have giving area funds that are focused on the foundation's primary charitable giving areas, which are family support, which is all sort of a broad human services category, the environment, which is focused primarily on water quality and on protection of, and advocacy for protecting our watersheds and advocating for the quality of water in our Arts and culture. And we have actually, in the last several years, pulled out our, our hunger relief program, which I'll tell you a little bit more about, and youth. And we have a big focus on working with youth in the region. We also do scholarship funds. We have a number of, we have quite a few scholarship funds that are focused on local area high school students in a number of our communities. We'd love to see, you know, how we might help folks in, in Hopkinton with some of our scholarship fund work. And town funds, we actually, recognizing not everyone identifies with the Metro West region for the last eight years, we've actually been building funds specific, specifically for individual communities. We've built town funds and built town boards to manage funds in the towns of Wellesley, Lexington, Southborough, and we're in the process of building them in Sherburne and Medfield right now. So those are some of the ways that we manage the resources that we use for our grant-making programs. In terms of initiatives, we do a regional grant program, which all nonprofits in the Hopkinton area are eligible to come to us for support. We run over 16 youth in philanthropy programs in the region, which I'll tell you a little bit more about, and our nonprofit educational programs through our Center for Philanthropy Education. There's just about every single week, and over the course of the year, over 50 free workshops that we offer to both staff and leadership and volunteers of the nonprofits that are serving this community, and as I just mentioned, our town fund initiatives. Our regional grant program, I also mentioned that, you know, it's focused on these five categories, family support, arts and culture, the environment, youth development, and hunger relief. And we, we distributed over $1.5 million last year in those five critical areas. In terms of our Hopkinton grant-making history, since our inception, we provided over 40 grants to organizations in the Hopkinton area, and that totals over $235,000, almost $236,000 that we've invested in the Hopkinton community. A sample of the nonprofits that we've supported have included the Center for the Arts, the Liz Now Center, the Symphony Orchestra's tier, and Project Just Because as part of different food and community suppers and agricultural programs in the areas to try to address the problem regionally. There's not one large food bank or one large food security organization to support, so we do the work to identify where the need is greatest and allocate our resources, both for food support as well as capital needs of those organizations. Our Center for Philanthropy Education, as I mentioned, we do leadership development and workshops to help these organizations build their capacity. As you see, as you try to fill out your organizations with skilled and enthusiastic volunteers, it's challenging to find people willing to step up and do that service, and often they don't have the skills and knowledge and training to serve on a nonprofit board. So we take a lot of the responsibility in the community for trying to prepare people for service on boards in community organizations.
And all of our services are free of charge.
I think that's important.
For all of our nonprofits.
Our Youth and Philanthropy Program was launched in 1997, recognizing that this is an area that's really a very family-oriented area. The trustees thought it was important to start trying to engage young people for lives of service, both in our communities, which, of course, being in New England, we are all volunteer-led communities and organizations. So we think that there's a really important role in preparing young people for lives of service, like yourselves are great examples of folks who really have embraced the idea that you have a responsibility. So the Youth and Philanthropy Program is really designed to, you know, plant those seeds and give those lessons very early on. It is the largest and longest-running program of its kind in the country. We've had over 1,500 young people who have participated in the program, and almost 100% of them have continued to be involved philanthropically in their lives. We track them. We know that they're doing work on campuses, in their communities, wherever they have settled and lived. But the idea of engaging young people very early on to teach them about the needs of their community, how they can become involved, and how they ultimately can long-term support their communities. So this year, we'll run 16 of these programs throughout the Metro West region, including one here in Hopkinton, which is always a program where we have twice as many kids who want to participate as we have spots for them to participate. So we've been running it since 2016. We've really been really overwhelmed by the positive response that we have from this community, and we think it says a lot about the culture that's already been created here, and we're happy to continue to play a role in fostering that among young people here in Hopkinton. And yes, in a short time, we've had almost 80 kids who have participated in the program. They've distributed over $30,000 back into the community. And two of your alumni, or the alumni from Hopkinton, have been very active participants in our work at the Foundation, in both, one was honored as our 2017 Young Philanthropist of the Year Award, where he was acknowledged at a very large corporate event last year in the fall, and it was really, his name was Ben Shere, a really terrific kid. And they've also continued to participate in helping us as instructors and assistants and so on. So that's in a nutshell, what we do, who we are. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I think the message we really want you to take away is that we're a resource. We're a resource for the town, and we're a resource for organizations, individuals, and businesses in the town, and that we hope you'll remember us and think of us when you have a need or an opportunity, that a philanthropic resource that has a tremendous amount of flexibility in how we approach our work can help you.
Judith, I'm gonna, if you'll forbear me, interrupt you for just a minute, because we have a scheduled public hearing at 7:30, which I'm, no, don't go away. I don't want to shortchange you, and I don't want to shortchange the board's opportunity to ask you a couple of questions. I do need to open the public hearing, and then we will ask that be paused, so we can just come back to you for a couple of questions.
Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the grant of location for Haverhill on Chestnut Street, Street, Verizon, and EverSource.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now, do we need a motion to pause it? Mr. Kim, do I need to ask the applicant to be willing to wait a few moments, or? Okay. To whoever, the folks who are here for the public hearing, if you would be so kind, we would like to just conclude with the presentation from the Foundation for Metro West, and we will pick up the public hearing in just a minute. Okay. So, questions? I will say, I will jump in first and say, last year, I did not know anything about this foundation at all. And then we had the wonderful honor, as you mentioned, of one of our very own, Hopkins' Ben Shere, who received the Youth and Philanthropy Award. I believe we honored him here at our meeting, and I know I and maybe Mr. Catino attended the event. It was such an example of the kind of confidence and presence that is developed in these young people, to see him stand up in front of a room of, oh, probably easily 500 people, and address them. And it was just a, it's just a wonderful organization. I think probably enough people don't know about it. I didn't know anything about it. I would, I'll let the board ask other questions, but I would love for the people watching at home, too, for you to just give a little bit more on explanation of how your Youth and Philanthropy program works, because we've had great participation in Hopkinton, and the fact that these young people actually have a chunk of money that they are allowed to give out using these principles of philanthropy that have been taught. So, you know, it's not like Monopoly money. This is real money, and they actually, they actually make these grants. So if you folks would permit for a minute, I'd just like Judy to just explain that a little more for people.
I think there's a couple of important things. I mean, our role with this program is really about preparing young people for lives of leadership and service. I mean, that's really at the heart of what we do. As I mentioned, this is New England. Our communities are only as good as the people who are willing to serve them, and we think it's important to start very young in doing that and preparing them. It is a semester-long program. It's a voluntary program. It is free, and we look for high school students who are interested in participating in the 16 programs, one being here. And during that 17-week program, we teach young people about the needs of their community, how nonprofit organizations work. They actually, we receive grant applications from local youth-serving organizations, that the students are taught how to review grant applications, how to evaluate a nonprofit financial 990 statement. They then are given the opportunity to think about where, if they were to have some financial resources, where they might want to invest them. And they decide which organizations they want to learn more about, and they go on site visits. So through that process, we take them to local organizations, where they ask really tough questions of the leadership of those organizations. They then have to come back to their group and come to consensus on how they would allocate charitable funds. The Foundation, and here in Hopkinton, we partner with the Hopkinton Country Club Charitable Foundation. We partner with them to provide $9,000 of grant-making funds. The students are asked to raise $1,000 to contribute to the grant-making, and then typically, they make two grants of $5,000 each to local youth organizations. They then have to present those decisions to a room like this, full of adults, who ask them very difficult questions on how they came to their decision. And then after that's all completed, there's a celebratory event where they present their checks to the nonprofit agencies and receive a graduation certificate, and many of them continue on to either serve local nonprofits, work as volunteers in nonprofits, or work with us on our program in future years. You know, the other young woman that I would tell you about is a young woman from Hopkinton who was so taken with the organization that they supported called Hope &amp; Comfort, which provides health and beauty products to local food pantries and so on, that she runs some sort of Etsy business, and for every bag that she makes and sells on Etsy, she donates $10 of her proceeds to that. And I saw her at an event where she gave them a check for $250. So it's not an insignificant thing, and that's the impact that this program has on kids with what we introduce them to.
I would just add that there's a lot of leadership development that goes, you know, along with this program, what we call 21st century skills, learning about collaboration, learning about consensus building, public speaking, obviously Ben Shere standing in front of that group. So those are the types of things that we focus on as well as it relates to this program.
What a wonderful, real-life, hands-on experience.
You give them this $10,000, and they take it very seriously. It's not a thing that's, you know, faint of heart for adults to give young people that kind of money, but they are really, really good stewards of it.
Absolutely. Board members, other comments, questions? Mr. Herr.
So my son went through the Youth and Philanthropy process here in town, I think, two years ago. And what struck me is when they went out and did their site visits, and they came back, they had multiple places they went, and they had to make decisions about where they should donate their funds, the funds they raised, along with the grant money. And it was a hard decision for them. And it was a hard decision for them, because I think he and others saw a lot of need in the community that he didn't know, they didn't know existed before. So it really opened their eyes to, wow, we live in a nice community, that there are still struggles in any community, and I think that was a very, very helpful for him as he was maturing as a person, so.
I think that's a really, yeah, I think it's a really important point. I think so many of us identify as Bostonians, and we get all of our media messages, and our sports teams are from Boston. But, you know, this is Hopkinton, this is Metro West, and there are philanthropic needs in this area. And our work is really to just raise the visibility that we hope that people develop their own personal charitable giving strategies by looking at their neighborhood, their town, their region as part of it. And doing it with young people is how a part of what we do.
Yeah, he really enjoyed it, and he learned a lot. Second point I would make, or just maybe a question for my colleagues and for the town manager, and perhaps some others that I think are in the audience in the back there. We have the Hopkinton Education Foundation, HEF, and we have the 26.2 Foundation that supports a lot of different things that goes on in town. But I think they're kind of steered towards specific, you know, approaches or opportunities in the community. I don't know if we have a more broad-scale foundation, like you mentioned several towns there, several towns that we are very similar to in population and economics and so forth. I'm wondering if that's something we should maybe be trying to look at and partner with these folks to develop over time. Just can't decide tonight, but something I think to throw out there.
Food for thought.
Yeah.
My favorite thing about it is the training that's going on. And as Mr. Herr said, for his son's eyes to be open to that there are needs in this town, and in Metro West. People may believe that everybody's doing just fine, but there are real needs, and those real needs have to be met. And to train the next generation, and not just to give, but to give responsibly, and to ask the right questions, and to make sure that the money's being used effectively. Because there's, you know, there are a lot of organizations that waste a lot of money in the, in the running of the organization, and not much of it gets to the people that need it. And so I just, the first thing I knew about it was the Youth and Philanthropy from a few years ago, when I was on the board. And then I went to the event last year and realized, wow. And then even now with this presentation, even more in-depth of just the breadth of the Metro West organization. But thank you very much for your talk today.
So I actually had no idea that you existed, and...
Don't feel bad.
Right there? So happy that you're here, because as a parent, you know, I look at my kids, and they're focused on their own little world, and, you know, I'm constantly trying to get them to open their eyes and pay attention to what's going on in the world. And it seems like you guys have kind of grabbed that, and made our kids kind of open their eyes and see what else is out there. And I think that's, that's huge. Because any, from my perspective, anything that is going to enhance our children's experience and give them leadership skills, and allow them to, you know, see the world in a different, a different viewpoint, that's invaluable, especially with the, with the competition that I see coming from overseas, from worldwide, even from within. Anything that's going to help our kids broaden their horizons, I think, is magnificent. So I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing, and I think my son and I are going to have a conversation about it.
So I was made aware of how you guys worked last year, when the kids from the school came in and talked about it, and I was bowled over, absolutely bowled over, by how in-depth they were, how involved they were, how passionate they were. When you think back, I think back to when I was a kid growing up, you know, my goal was to work my paper route, get enough money to buy a wrestling magazine, practice my wrestling moves with my neighbors. These guys are out trying to make, turn 10,000 bucks into a million bucks, and to give it away. It's a, it's a great concept. And I know that our schools teach the kids, you know, the schools have come a very long way from when we were kids, where, you know, my kids come home and they're talking about helping out here. My daughter volunteers down at Just Because and does lemonade stands when something happens, and they want to send the money in there. So the whole concept is kind of ingrained in the kids when they're young, and that to have a program like this available when they get to be aged up to utilize it is something that I'm certainly, like Mr. Nasrullah said, certainly something that I would love to have my kids get involved in. So thank you for taking the time and coming and making the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you coming and speaking to us, and I hope that all the people watching at home have learned something. And, you know, we'll, I guess you're over-enrolled with Hopkinton kids, but that's a good thing.
They can go to other places, too. We have some programs that are regional programs, and so we have kids that, from Hopkinton, that actually participate in programs in Natick and Sudbury and around the region. So we're happy to have as many as you want to send our way. They're great kids, and thank you all very much for your time tonight. We know you have a busy agenda, a lot to deal with, so we really appreciate it.
Well, we are really grateful, grateful for all that you do, and thank you for coming. Well, if we can now return to our public hearing, we...
We have one in between.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We also have a presentation by the 26.2 Foundation, so if, again, our friends from EverSource and Verizon will forbear, we would like to hear from Mr. Kilduff. Tim, come on up. We apologize. We are way, way off schedule tonight.
No need to apologize.
It's the way it goes sometimes.
Thank you. Of course.
Ooh, fancy.
Ooh.
Go to our intersection.
Good evening, young man.
How are you this evening?
We are fine, Mr. Kilduff. What have you got for us? Good news, I hope.
There is good news. Before I begin, you know, you did me a favor a couple weeks ago, Claire, when you said, when you asked me a question about the Board of Directors of the 26.2 Foundation. So I think some of this gets narrowly focused, but I want to, I wanted to introduce you to three of the directors of the Foundation: Joe Baldiga, Mike Lawrence, you know, and Bruce McDonald, all residents of Hopkinton.
Welcome.
They're part of about an eight-person board.
Great, well, thank you for coming, Joe.
Claire, what is this going on? Huh? I'm sorry? I have no idea. I'm not going to touch it, though. I'll let you do it. Part of the, while we're... Well, we're playing with that. Here we go. I wanted to, I was this week in Washington, DC, at the Marine Corps Marathon, and I think there are two examples that I wanted to share with you to put our marathon footprint in perspective. The one is Catherine Switzer was there, and she made it very clear that she wanted to be remembered to you for the gift that you gave her on the 50th anniversary of her race, and John, for the work you did running around, making sure that her 100 runners had water. The other was, I had the opportunity to spend a few minutes with General Dunford, who happens to be the Chairman and the Joint Chiefs of Staff at the moment, and I think doing a spectacular job, by the way. But it was very interesting, because that he pulled me... But it was very interesting because that he pulled me aside and asked about Bob Lavoy.
Was that before he passed?
Pardon?
Had he passed at that point?
Yes, he had. But we had a quiet conversation, they did, Bob Lavoy and three other Marines a few years ago. But it was, I always get touched by this, because here's this guy that's worrying about Afghanistan and the rest of the world, and he wanted to make sure that Bob's family had gotten his message, which is part of this mystique about Hopkins' connection to the marathon. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes, and I gave you a hard copy, because we don't have time to go through all of this, we could spend a considerable amount of time. But this is the mission of the foundation, which really focuses on using the marathon as a platform. But just a brief history, we started the Hopkins Athletic Association back in 1996 with the support of the Board of Selectmen in the Boston Athletic Association. We began very humble beginnings, but as we began to realize, a 501(c)(3) IRS status was approved at that point. As we got more and more involved, we began to realize that our reach goes beyond our borders, and we started to take on a more global view of marathoning and our involvement in the world, the community's involvement in the world, and how we reach out. So, we changed it to 26.2 Foundation. And by the way, I want to point out that I got so nervous, there's so much news, topics in the borders that are being discussed, I misspelled borders on this, I don't know why, whether I was nervous or I'm too absorbed with the news, but I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. And everything we do supports and enriches Hopkins' brand. You're going to be dealing with an issue later of trails, for example, and that's, this is another example where you've got a community with several different groups that have been able to now, they're pretty close to creating a network through the whole community. It's pretty phenomenal, what we're doing. And we can't take all the credit for that, but we do push it. This is a list of some of our partners that we're dealing with, that list is getting bigger and bigger. Again, you can look at that in terms of your hard copies, but I put the Board of Selectmen and the Hopkins Athletic Association at the top, because you are allies. While we are a private 501(c)(3) organization, everything we've done from the day we started has been in collaboration with the town, and that's really important to us. And there are other organizations, like the Marine Corps Marathon, GRL Architects has provided a tremendous amount of support and in-kind services for us. The Athens Marathon, Corporate Communications is another one. You all know Bob Dubinsky, he serves on Parks and Rec. If we have an issue in terms of really presenting or positioning, we go to him, and he gives us a lot of valuable advice. So, our marathon footprint, those are just two examples, three examples. Those sculptures, particularly the Karakides sculpture, now is, has worldwide recognition. When we bring the wreaths to the Marine Corps Marathon for Marathon Greece, they're presented in the name of Hopkinton and also Stelliana's Karakides. The Browns, we don't have to talk about that, we know how powerful that is, and the start of this Boston Marathon provides a great platform. We named the town, named the New Elementary School Marathon. I just want to reinforce the fact that that is a significant story globally. When we pushed that out to the marathon world, they were, oh, everybody got excited. These are people that run international organizations that can't believe that this community did that. So, it's a powerful tool for us. You know about the Elmwood, and we can spend, again, spend 40 minutes on that, but that Hancock Elmwood program is the only program of its type in the world. It's been going on for over 20 years. It's a phenomenal program and will continue. They're still committed to that. This middle school, just want to touch on that briefly. The teachers in the middle school have created something called Desire to Inspire. They, again, they use the marathon as a platform, but they use it to inspire kids across the board, not just in terms of running. In fact, most of the stuff they do is beyond the world of running. Joe Kennedy was a speaker, and there have been others, and they'll continue to, that program has now been strengthened.
Keep going.
You okay? The other thing that we have all been involved with over the years is expanding this footprint, but now there are other entities in town that are picking up on this. There are two examples there. One is the banner program that the Chamber of Commerce initiated, which was, I think, spectacular. So, there were banners paid for by businesses in town that went from this, a little further than the starting line, almost to the, this year they'll reach the town line, they'll reach the Ashland line. I don't want to pick on our neighbors, but I saw the program that they did, and this was significantly better. And the other is the marathon spectacular that Western Nurseries did last spring with Start Line Brewing. Tough year to do this kind of program, but they've committed to do it again, weather-dependent, and it's going to be terrific. So, moving forward, we want to spend our time continuing to develop and implement programs that expand Hopkinton's footprint. That's the number-one objective, and it allows us, again, to communicate globally. The other is to expand our global reach. I gave you two examples at the Marine Corps Marathon, and there are others, both in Greece and in China now. The Greek-American community has realized the kind of influence that we have in this sphere, so our reach is going to now begin to spread. And we're just, we're ready to launch an advisory committee on the International Marathon Center. We could spend an hour in the Marathon Center, we won't do that, but we're moving in this area. The kind of people that'll be, serve on that advisory committee are Dick and Rick Hoyt, Catherine Switzer, the Bureau Chief of Bloomberg News in Boston, Ambie Burford, who's a marathon champion, Richard Johnson, who's the curator of the New England Sports Museum, and Governor Dukakis. And there's another individual who's run at least 25 marathons, who we've asked to join, and that's Brian Herr, because of his marathon experience. Opportunities. Again, very quickly, I have on the top the blue line. What we've been able to do, in large part because of the work that John Cotino has done in terms of meeting with the BAA, they want to enhance the start of the marathon. There's a blue line, as you know, at the end of the race, it's the last mile, I think it is. We're going to, we'd like this community to work with them to create a, from the starting line to the, hopefully, the town line in Hopkinton, which will, again, mirror what's happening in Boston. It's going to bring the image of what we're doing up substantially. The Bobby Gibbs sculpture, we now have a contract with her. She's created a clay model. It's a self-portrait, if you will. She's a very good sculptor, so that's in the works now. We're in the process of raising the funds necessary to do that. You have the board, a year ago, communicated with her, hoping, communicating with her, hoping that the sculpture would be placed somewhere in Hopkinton, and we'll start that process before the year's out. Hopkinton Library and the Ashland Libraries, we have decided that we want to create marathon sections in both of those libraries. There are some books in Hopkinton, not very many, but we're excited about this. So, people like Catherine and others will donate their books to Hopkinton. We've already started the organizational structure in Hopkinton. We'll have some volunteers working with the staff here. The staff has been very helpful and very excited about the possibilities. I think, we try not to scare them, because there are more than 100 books, there are lots of marathon-related books, and we think we can be selective and develop a pretty good, a pretty good set of books here. We want to be much, much more aggressive in sharing our examples and the kind of successful programs that we have. We want to share those with other communities. And I want to touch very quickly on the state curriculum. Right now, every sixth grader studies ancient Greece. The state has decided they're going to shift the curriculum around so that they can do more work in the area of, thank heavens, civics. And so, they're moving the Greek curriculum to the seventh grade. Our teachers are going to be in a really key position. We're collecting the materials that they use, we're going to share them with the state, and we think we're going to have an influence on that particular curriculum statewide. We're really excited about that. We're going to launch the second phase of the cross-country course. You recall, we worked with the school department and created a short course that the middle school has been using. We want to expand that. So, ultimately, the high school kids will be able to run a cross-country competition behind the high school. If you haven't seen, Brian's been there, and he's seen the middle school. To get the cross-country kids who don't get much notoriety, to be able to run by the rest of the teams and have those teams stop and cheer them on is really quite heartwarming. So, we're excited about that. It's really a thrill. And then finally, in this particular area, these opportunities, we're going to launch a program. It'll be taped and in conjunction with H-CAM, and it will focus solely on marathon-related subjects, again, based in Hopkinton. We're going to work with them to put that on YouTube, and it's going to expand our reach immensely. We believe there's an audience globally for the kind of product that we can produce. And then finally, our request is pretty simple, and you have been kind and supportive the last few years to give us some time to give you a quick update. But it's important that we seek your endorsement of the mission of the 26.2 Foundation, which you have continued to support of the creation of the International Marathon Center, and we owe you a major update on that one. Encourage the 26.2 Foundation's involvement and expansion in non- logistic aspects of the race. We have a marathon committee that deals with the logistics aspects, that does a terrific job. That's not what we're looking at. We're looking at the kind of stuff we've been talking about the last few minutes. And then finally, the continued support. We've been getting charity numbers since 1996, and we hope to continue that. It's a great source of funding for us, obviously. So, collapsed. It is, in fact, particularly for me and the directors of the foundation, it is a personal privilege to be able to blend the fact that the Boston Marathon starts here with the activities in the community with this potential for global reach, and ultimately, the development of International Marathon Center in Hopkinton. And we appreciate the opportunity to come in periodically and give you an update. And as always, we're more than happy to drill down either now or in the future with either of you, either as a group or individually, on any questions or issues that you may have.
Well, thank you for the update, Tim. I think you know that the town has supported you in your endeavor. The 26.2 Foundation and the town of Hopkinton share mutual goals and mutually benefit one another as well. And I can't speak for the entire board, for the entire town, but I would certainly expect that that commitment and that partnership will continue into the future. You've already done great things, and there's greater things on the horizon, so we're delighted to have that partnership.
If I may, can I make a motion to support them? I'd like to make a motion to endorse the mission of the 26.2 Foundation, continue to support the creation of an International Marathon Center, encourage the 26.2 Foundation's involvement and expansion to non- logistic aspects of Hopkinton's marathon footprint, and finally, support the foundation's receipt of the Boston Marathon charity entries.
Second.
Excellent. Are there questions or comments from board members?
I think they do a great job, and I like the idea of continuing to further expand the brand and the awareness of what happens here in town, but also how that can go elsewhere around the globe. And I'm 110% behind everything they do.
So, for me, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, Mr. Kilduff is like the Energizer Bunny when it comes to this stuff. He's been on point, he's been motivated, dedicated. We're fortunate to have someone like this that's in our corner, not just putting together this 26.2 Foundation, but someone who's so passionate about the town of Hopkinton, and he's been a resident of Hopkinton forever. You know, it's just, it's a win-win. And anytime I see Mr. Kilduff on the agenda to come in and make a presentation or to discuss things with us, I know that it's going to be condensed, succinct, and to the point. There's no fluff, and I certainly appreciate his update, and your hard work is not lost on this board.
Thank you.
Night with Kilduff is always a good night. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that is unanimous. Did I shortchange you, Mr. Nasserullah? Sorry. You've got to be quick here.
Yes, you did. Real quick, though. You know, in our tiny little town, to have this international event come every year, you know, we come to take it, I've come to, you know, just expect it and take advantage of it, not even really understanding, like, how much work really goes on behind the scenes. So, I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing. We sponsored a runner from Greece about five years ago. And we got a chance to hang out with him and all of the, there was a whole Greek delegation that came over. And it just, it's hard to put my finger on it to say what I'm trying to say, but just the international reach that we have here in Hopkinton is incredible. These guys from Greece, they could not wait to come here and just run around. And it was fabulous, so, thank you.
You're timely, welcome. Claire, if I may, I really want all of you up here to, I guess, understand and accept the fact that I consider this a personal privilege, I really do, to be able to go to someplace like Washington and have the kind of conversations that I've had. Based on our connection and what we do here in Hopkinton is an absolute thrill for me. And I understand taking time out of your schedule is important, and it's extremely significant, and I don't underestimate the value and the power that comes from the collaboration between the 26.2 Foundation and this board. It's extremely important to me, and I appreciate it. So, thank you.
The admiration and the appreciation is mutual. So, thank you so much for coming, Tim. We're really glad to hear the update.
Thank you for the time.
Tim, just a quick side note, the Elmwood thing that I've gone to for years and years, it got quiet there for a couple of years, for whatever reason. I think they were just toning it all down, but in the last two or three years, I hear the volume coming right back up, so it's gotten quite raucous again. I think it's great, I love it.
It did get quiet for a while.
Yeah, it's really, it's been great. I love it.
Claire, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And to our friends now, who have been very patient, from Verizon, New England, and Eversource, the Board of Selectmen will consider acting on two petitions submitted by Verizon and Eversource to relocate one pole on Chestnut Street and four poles on Hayden Row in order to accommodate design changes to the Hayden Row-Chestnut Street intersection, a town project. The utility poles will be relocated within the road right of way. Welcome.
Good evening.
And you are?
My name is Ross Bilidou, I'm representing Verizon, New England, this evening.
Okay, Eversource, yes, no, no. Okay. Ross, thank you for coming. I know we've all had a chance, I think, to look at your diagram and got a bit of a sense of what's going on. Mr. Westerling is here, too, but do you want to just give us a quick rundown and be open to board questions?
Sure. As you stated, a handful of pole relocations going on in the vicinity of Hayden Row and Chestnut Street intersection. These pole relocations are needed to support a road widening and safety improvements project that's going on in that area. There are no new poles being added, we're just jostling around a... We're just jostling around a, a couple of the existing poles, five of them in fact, four of them on Hayden Row and one of them on Chestnut Street in order to support that project.
Well, it certainly makes sense. I've looked at where the old poles are and where the new poles are going is, is, you know, a very logical move that's going to improve the whole area. Any sense of when the moving would actually happen?
I'm not sure of any timeline at this point, but I know that they are working out there. I went out and reviewed the site before I come to the meeting and I'm assuming something will be happening pretty soon, so.
Mr. Camalo, do you have some information on that?
If I may, through the chair, and also I'm saying this on behalf of the town staff. This has been a very frustrating experience working with both Eversource and Verizon. Our positions regarding this project started way back in, in March and I'm disappointed that we're just getting to this hearing now. This in fact is putting the project in jeopardy. Our goal was to finish this project before the commencement of the winter season this year. And based on where we are, I don't see this work being done until next spring and this is very frustrating.
Well, I believe our work here is done.
I mean, I know that, that intersection has been torn up for a while with our own project and created its own share of traffic snarls, so it would be nice if we could get this done and complete and not, not keep it going.
Sure. I wasn't privy to any of the, you know, backstory to any of the project prior to this morning, really, asking to attend this meeting, but I will ask my colleagues to expedite the project, try and ease your guys' concerns.
I mean, I was glad when I saw this on the agenda that they actually are planning on moving poles because this has been an ongoing sore spot throughout the town. Clearly, this is part of our own project we want done, but I know, as you probably are aware, we've had a bit of a history in recent years of this board refusing requests from the utility companies until they got some of this work done, which as Mr. Camalo says, has been like pulling teeth on absolutely everything. So, you know, we want this done for our project, but, you know, it just seems to be that every single time, it, it takes an inordinate amount of time and it's a tremendous inconvenience for the town and doesn't do good for building relationships, let's put it that way. Mr. Hur?
So you've just got assigned to come out tonight and represent us and represent the firm and here we are. But this exact conversation we've had for the last five years.
Yep.
And so this is not a reflection on you as an individual.
No, no. The lucky guy that got to come tonight.
Your company, we all work for companies, so we all get it, has just annoyed us to no end every time they walk in the building. And nothing to, I mean, I've never seen this man get frustrated before.
I like it, though.
Yeah, that's pretty cool, huh?
Fresh meat.
I don't want to get on the wrong side of him all of a sudden.
Fresh meat.
I just, you know, this is just a broken record for me, sitting here for 10 years and whatever, just we got to fix it.
Just echoing what Brian said, I've never seen Mr. Camalo get reacting such a manner. I understand your position, but if you could please relay the, the concerns of the town, you know, we're supposed to be working together here, so.
So now you know why when they were asking for volunteers to come out tonight, everybody else stepped back?
They didn't look at the case.
Well, with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the two petitions submitted by Verizon and Eversource to relocate one pole on Chestnut Street and four poles on Hayden Row in order to accommodate design changes to the Hayden Row-Chestnut Street intersection, which is a town project.
Second.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from the board before we take a vote? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed. It is unanimous, so thank you for coming. As Mr. Hur said, it's not about you personally, but.
Understood.
You know, we'd like to see a little, a little change.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for waiting for us, too.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, did we vote to close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ooh.
No, we did not.
So let's think this through. We can still do that now.
Just to close the public hearing and then take the vote again?
Withdraw the motion, withdraw the vote.
Yes.
Okay.
Withdraw that motion.
So Mr. Coutinho has withdrawn his motion. I must first request a motion to close the public hearing.
So is there anyone else here that has any comments about these polls?
That's true.
Madam Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it is unanimous. And now, Mr. Coutinho, would you please make the motion again?
I apologize for making the motion early.
Well, I apologize, I'm not catching it.
I just felt badly for the guy getting beat up by us. Madam Chair, I'd like to propose a, a motion to approve the petition submitted by Verizon and Eversource to relocate one pole on Chestnut Street and four poles on Hayden Row in order to accommodate design changes to the Hayden Row-Chestnut Street intersection, which is a town project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, that is unanimous. Okay. Sorry about that. And now, we have, a little bit late, our apologies, a joint meeting with the Permanent Building Committee to discuss Center School. The Board of Selectmen will discuss the future use of Center School with the Permanent Building Committee, PBC, including recommendations of the Center School Reuse Advisory Team, identifying a specific task and its related goals for the PBC, which may include, but are not limited to, conducting a feasibility study, reviewing the future uses of the building and ways to improve the utilization of space in the building. So are there room, is there room for everybody? Everybody else sit? And I know we have some of the members of the Center School Committee are here. I think we can just maybe.
I think Mr. Flannery's going to sit here.
Mr. Flannery, come up and we can call on the other members for input as needed. It's, the meeting actually is between the Selectmen and the, and the PBC, so.
Mr. McIntyre saving seats like the old school bus days, huh?
It is not with the Center School Reuse Committee, although I think they should be here, so.
Okay.
All right. Well, we are, we are here to discuss with the PBC.
And for the record, we did post a PBC meeting, so the four of us are legal here.
Okay. You're legal here. So gentlemen, have you had an opportunity to take a look at the work of the Center School Reuse Committee so far?
I have. We looked at their report and it's like they did a good job of getting public involvement and trying to figure out what to do with that building and I think they came to the right conclusion that it's a, a good building to save for the town.
As you probably understand, their charge was not really to get, you know, deeply into the nitty-gritty or the weeds of, of costs or construction or whatever as much as gauge town concerns, town needs, and, and take kind of a, you know, 35,000-foot view of the project. They certainly, you know, have done an extensive amount of work over a year and gotten a lot of input, so I think from our last meeting, this board was certainly satisfied that they've done a very, made a very good effort to take the pulse of the town and also that we've, you know, determined there are a lot of town needs within various boards and departments and committees that need to be met in one way or another. And there seemed to be quite a strong town consensus that this is a building that the community would like to see retained for municipal use in municipal, in the municipal realm. So our next step is to figure out how we get there and start to look at what's, what is, is practical and maybe from that get a clearer sense of how we should go about this, so.
Well, I think, I think we do have the skill set to take it to that next step and do a more in-depth feasibility study.
So, I'm sorry, Dan, can you hang on one sec? Because I think, I'm a little confused. One, I support the idea of the community keeping this building, just putting that right out there. I don't think we've made that decision, however. I think we made a decision to get the Permanent Building Committee involved, have them, I don't think the town's made that decision, if you will, and get input from them as to how we would proceed and what we would do, et cetera, et cetera. But the decision to save a, what is it, 40,000 square foot building on behalf of the town, that formal decision has not been made and I think we got to be careful with that.
Well, if I may, I, maybe, maybe I misspoke or you misunderstood. What I was attempting to do was to summarize what came out of the work of the, of the Center School Reuse Committee and the message that had come out of the surveys within the town.
They definitely recommended that, I agree.
Not that it's a decision, but this was the overarching message that has come out from their work.
And I'm on board with that decision, but I'm not sure what the process is for us to decide to keep that building.
Which is why I think we bring them in.
One of the questions, see, I, I, when you were speaking, I thought that you jumped and you said, asking the Permanent Building Committee how to further utilize it and everything and, and put it to practical use. I want my first question to ask the Permanent Building Committee, is it practical? That's my first question, before we, to see how, how to chop it up and everything. Is it practical, given, given the, the age of the building and the amount of work that's needed to, that we need municipal uses, there's, we have a lot of uses that could, that, that need to be taken care of.
But that's the kind of question that would be answered.
I think that's getting to Brian's point.
Right.
Whereas, I don't, we don't know the answer to that question.
And that's why, that's why we needed.
We'll do the feasibility study. If it comes out to be $100 million to do this building, nobody wants to spend that kind of money.
Well, that's why we return to them, because that goes beyond the scope of what the, the Center School team was able to do. So the next step is to discuss or investigate, is it practical and everything that, is it practical means?
But, but I just want to make sure that we weren't going into, into, okay, let's, let's start designing it and see how much it costs. I want to make first the answer, is it even feasible? And then, then get into it. So let's just, let's, let's also, we'll take it from 30,000 feet to 10,000.
So, so here's my sense of what's happening. As a community, we are emotionally tied to this building. I don't think there's any doubt in the community that that's the case. And I'm emotionally tied to that building and I've been here 20 years and all my kids went through that building and I want to see Hopkinton keep that building too. But I don't want to rush the decision or rush, rush the message that we have decided to keep that building. We haven't yet. The RICS Committee did a great job, the feasibility or whatever, whatever it's called, the Reuse Advisory Committee, thank you, did a great job. And now we need to get into some, a little bit more of the nitty-gritty into some numbers and things like that. And once we figure that out, then I think the community can have some forums and we can start talking about cash and cash flow and a lot of other things that are going to come with this. But I've just, what I heard was, and I apologize if I misheard it, was the community's decided to keep the building and this is what we're going to do.
No, no.
And we got to be very careful not to message that because I'm going to hear about it on the fields this weekend.
No.
If that's what the message is.
No.
Because that's not.
What I said.
We're not, we're not fully all bought into this concept.
No, no. And I apologize if that's what was communicated, because what I meant to, to say was that the predominant opinion from the public surveys and the public forums was a community desire to keep this building in the municipal realm.
Totally agree.
Which is why the next step is now to start to look at, is it feasible?
Totally agree.
And, and I would add to Mr. Coutinho's comment about feasibility, I think even feasibility, feasibility depends on what you find when the committee, were they to take this on, starts to look into, you look into what the needs are, you look into what the building has to offer or doesn't have to offer, and that's when you actually look into configurations. You know, feasibility might depend on, do you, we talked about almost like three separate buildings, the 29, the, the 50s, 60s and the 80s, you know. Looking at all three buildings is, is a different kind of feasibility than taking out the middle section and just doing the 80s and the other, you know, that's where you would get into, you know, feasibility costs depending on how you decide to design it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to do some programming based on the, the needs that were identified in the, in the Reuse Committee's report.
Yep.
And then work that into a cost estimate so we can see what, what the numbers are going to look like.
If I recall correctly, what we left off in one of the discussions we were having was, do we engage the services of, of an architect or of any kind of firm where we're going to expend funds when we have not yet made a decision? And I think that was Brian's big concern, is do we spend money in determining what to do with this without one of the town meeting? And I think, I mean, I think that, that was kind of the stumbling block and I think that's where we left off.
But we also said that we would engage our colleagues in the Permanent Building Committee to come, and bear with us, guys, we're going to come back to you here in a minute. We've got to, we've got to fix our own mess first. We also, we're going to go, reach out to our colleagues on the PBC and let them help us start to figure out.
Right.
What it was all going to look like as we would go into a town meeting. Maybe the thing that we could also add to this process is we could get with Mr. Camalo and Mr. Mieres and outline to all of us and to the public at large, what would be the process that we as a community would follow? We had never bought a building like this that's up and historic and it's got some needs for work, et cetera, that I can remember anyway. What would be the process to make all this happen and get that outlined for us too? And let's make that a very public document as to how this will all play out. See what I'm saying? This has town meeting written all over it, but I don't know exactly how we get to town meeting.
Through the chair, in, in terms of outlining a process for answering the questions that are raised by the board, taking the unique characteristics of the site and building in, in, into consideration, I think is doable. However, in terms of today's discussion, I think the board needs to clarify what the "it" remains, refers to. I keep hearing, doing a feasibility study for "it," but what is the "it"? What I hear on one hand is that the feasibility study focuses on the recommendations of the Center School Reuse Advisory Team. I also hear on the other hand, comments suggesting that there's something else that we should be evaluating. Is, is that the case?
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay. So what, what then, what, what then is the "it"? What, what the feasibility study is going to be on what?
From this seat, it's the feasibility study and I would like the Permanent Building Committee to engage in, in understanding and getting preliminary numbers and things without spending money of any consequence. Maybe there's a little $5,000 budget or something for that, to get some budget numbers, I get it. But the feasibility of maintaining and preserving that site and that building on that site for the uses outlined by the Reuse Committee. That's, that's my view of this situation. And then once we have that information and we have the process that we would follow for doing some work that they may suggest, you know, then what's the process to actually come up with the cash to get it done? This is not going to be a $2 million deal, no matter what we talk about. Tearing it down is going to be $2 million, so we don't want to do that, but you know, this is, there's a lot of money going to be involved here. And I just think town council should, could help the community understand what process we have to follow. That way we don't have the message concerns that, you know, I can already see, I'm going to get, I'm going to get some feedback on the fields this weekend, based on the meeting tonight so far.
And if I may, through the chair, what I'm, what I was asking for is a generic practicality. Like you were saying, you want to look into here and see what the configurations, what people are looking for. I'm not even thinking about it even at that level. Just a generic refit of a, of a 1929 building, a 1980s building, a 1950s building. You know, what's the, the, again, where, they were 30,000 feet. At 10,000 feet, first look at it and then see if it's, if it's worth investing again at the thousand-foot level where we're starting to talk about the individual groups that want to use in specific areas and that, to make it, you know, a deeper feasibility study.
I guess it depends on what you're going to do with the information that we provide you. We'll, we'll come back to you, say, yes, we can fit X, Y and Z in there and it's going to cost, you know, Z, Z million dollars. What are you going to do with that decision? You got to base it, your decision to keep the You gotta base your, your decision to keep the building or sell the building based on that number? 'Cause if you are, we can't do it on five thousand dollars. For five thousand dollars, we're gonna give you a very generic answer, and it's not gonna give you the information you need to really make a decision of that magnitude.
Well, if I may, again, through the chair, to clarify, maybe, you know, in order to make the, the building up to, up to the, what are we, at two thousand nine building standards, you know, to meet, meet ADA requirements for, for, for the, for the, for the new building codes, to, to make it insulated, you know, I'm just talking about, just to, a basic refit for, for a nineteen twenty-nine, was it eighty thousand square feet, total?
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand square feet, for a fifty-five thousand square foot building, you know, to, to make it, you know, what, what, what are those basic costs first? We might be able to do that for five K, and then we can, then, then if you come back and say, you know, thirty-five million, forty million, fifteen, whatever the number is, then that at least gives the, gives people a, a chance to start, start thinking about, okay, how much do we love it? The same thing, when you get, when you, you know, to get your house repaired or, or to get an antique car built, redone or something.
In, in fact, through the chair.
That's why I said.
The work.
You're down the middle bar.
Yeah. The work that Mr. Coutino is describing has already been done.
How so?
Through the, based on discussions that the town manager was having with the Board of Selectmen on several properties in town, and also looking forward to our transitioning back to Town Hall, we, we did enlist the services of an architectural firm that did a preliminary estimate, answering the questions that Mr. Coutino has raised. And that, that report can be shared with the Permanent Building Committee.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Camallo.
Is that where the twelve to sixteen million dollar number came from in the reuse report?
Twelve to sixteen, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Twelve to sixteen million?
Right.
For the front building?
All three.
All.
Well, may, may I ask, when we were looking at that structure for a possible Town Hall use, were they looking at trying to reconfigure and work with the existing interior structure? Or was, was that also included, because one possibility of this would be, for instance, for the, for the twenty-nine building, would be to just take everything out and then put in an interior structure to meet what you need, which is different than trying to just work with the existing classrooms? Were they looking at a gut or just work with what is, is there and improve it?
It was a combination of both.
Okay.
There are sections that, of the building that could be improved upon and should be preserved, and there were sections of the building that were identified that needed to be gutted.
Because I know, just even in just, you know, informal discussions that we had on the committee, there were a lot of, you know, first you looked at just what the identified town space needs are for the different boards and committees that we'd like to try to meet within that structure somewhere. But there were a whole lot of different options for how you could get there, whether it was, you know, deal with all three buildings, take the middle building down, you know, completely gut the twenty-nine one and then recon, reconstruct the interior to meet your needs. You know, there were a lot of, a number of different ways, so, you know, you might wanna look at how to meet those needs.
Right, and when, when we come back to you with our report, I'm expecting to get those type of questions, and I wanna be able to answer them.
Yeah.
And I don't think I can with five thousand dollars.
Keeps coming back to my five grand. It's all my fault.
He shouldn't have said it.
But I know the team, you know, and this is just one option, but this was an option that was used for a lot of the forums, which seemed to go down well with the public, was not to be too hung up on that middle, that middle section, which is probably the neediest, that, you know, maybe you're looking at two buildings and then you meet your parking needs and whatever. So I just don't wanna get, you know, I don't want, wouldn't want the board to spend an inordinate amount of time on an entire rehab if, right from the outset, looking at the spatial needs, you know, the initial viewpoint is that we're not necessarily saying that those needs need all three buildings, if you will.
Right.
You know, two buildings is a whole different kettle of fish than the middle one.
But those are the type of things we'd look at.
Right.
If we tore down the middle one.
Right.
We could look at the feasibility of having two separate buildings and two separate elevators, two separate heating plants.
Yep.
Those type of things that we'd have to take into consideration.
Right.
If I may, through the chair, so what do you think is a reasonable figure to put away to do a, do a study?
Let's put money aside for a minute.
Politician.
The Reuse Committee recommended a number of things to go in that building or buildings. They've, they've got the school administration, they've got Parks and Rec, they've got the information technology, youth and family services, the Schools Life Skill Program, the Youth Community Center, Recreation Gym. That's, that's a lot to go in there.
Even if some doubled up, I mean, that's a possibility.
So I, I think we'd like to get some sort of prioritization from either Selectmen or the Reuse Committee on what's really important, so we know when we start to program this thing, which ones that we can drop out when we find out that we don't have enough space for everything there. Do we, do we any, do we prioritize any of those?
Mr. Flannery.
I, I don't think we prioritized any of them. I think the, I think, and I'll speak for the team, certainly, team members here can correct me, but I think we were looking at it from the standpoint of, these are needs that residents of the town have expressed to us, as well as the internals polling of the Town Department, Boards and Committees, that were at the top of the list, that they always kept coming up, those, the, the school administration offices, town offices, Parks and Recreation were all at the top. Ultimately, we felt as a team that that prioritization shouldn't be ours to decide, it should be the more professional studies done by some group like the Permanent Building Committee in conjunction with the board and the Town Manager's Office to determine what best fits in there. When your recommendation goes before the board, they can look at it and decide if that is in, in accordance with their vision of what that building should be going for.
I mean, these needs are all existing needs that are not being met now, but, you know, whether you look at it from the standpoint of, we have to meet these needs and it's gotta fit in that building, so now we gotta find a way to make them fit, and that's when maybe you get into the, oh, now we're gonna have to keep the, whatever is it, fifty, sixty's edition? Or maybe you look at it from the other aspect, is what is financially feasible, reasonable? And, you know, maybe you end up with two buildings, and then you say, well, we just can't fit all that stuff in, and so we're gonna have to make priorities that, you know, we can't meet this board's need, that board, you know. I'm not sure from what came out from those studies that those are all needs that we're saying absolutely we have to have in that building. It was just more a, a view of how many town needs there are that, that need space. But I wouldn't, I don't think that you should be constrained by every single one of those town needs. I would prefer you to take a, take a look at the building and the cost and say, what's reasonable for the town, and then we'll just see what we can work within.
And if I may, through the chair, can I throw one more out of the box thing? Is just refurb, refurbbing the, the nineteen twenty-nine section? And what's the cost of, of just building a whole new gym? Because in some, in some aspects, that may actually be less expensive than to repair and, and refit, refit the old one. Looking at some of the rebuild costs of, of what a gymnasium costs to build, we, it may actually be cheaper to just save the, and then put, put another gym behind it, a brand-new one.
But clean up the eighties?
And just wanna take out, take out, it seems like everybody's, everybody's nostalgic about the old section.
No, no. No, the gym and then the eighties classrooms, you keep, clean up those, clean those, yeah.
Take everything right out, and, you know, 'cause if that's, people keep asking for the gym, the gym, the gym, for a rec area, but to redo that, the heating systems and everything else, and, 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 and re-strengthen the walls and the, and the foundation where the cracks are and all that stuff, it may be less expensive to make it, make, level up the whole area and put in a whole nother gym. Just, just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
But not take away the eighties. The eighties is, is fairly new. Just clean that up. We're talking about the gym.
Again, if it, if it costs more money to redo the eighties than, than if we don't need this, if we don't need the space.
The six, six classrooms?
Oh, we haven't, okay, well, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
'Cause people keep saying knock down the center section.
Mr. Wise Manal, can, can you add something?
Yes, Vice Chairman of the Committee. I've read the architects' report that did the study for our town manager. All the questions you just asked were answered in that report.
Okay.
He's got numbers for rehabbing each section. In fact, he's got a study where he fit all of Town Hall into the whole building, keeping the fifty section. So all these numbers are there, all are relative costs, puts a caution that these aren't construction estimates, 'cause he's doing a relative cost based on other projects he's done around the Commonwealth. But all these questions you've asked are kinda there. I caution everyone on the fifty section. I'm not in love with that, but I also like to keep Town Hall. So if you don't put all of Town Hall over there, you can get rid of the fifty section and meet all the needs that we put in the, in the report.
Okay.
So I, I would suggest you all read the report. It'll educate you and get you at a much better level than where you are today. And ninety percent of the questions you've just asked, which are all great questions, you are gonna answer.
Good, okay. That, that was part of my concern, that the stuff was not relevant because it was answering a different question, but you're saying it is, so that's, that's great. Mr. Camallo?
In fact, building on that point, now that it is clear, now that we are clear on the purpose of the feasibility study, I respectfully suggest that perhaps you assign the town manager to work with the Permanent Building Committee in reviewing the report that was put together preliminarily by the architects, and see if there are ways of, at least using the existing information to answer the questions that have been raised by the board. In addition, if there's additional work that would need to be done, for us then to decide what's the best way to get that work done.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like a good first step to see that report.
And I'm sure Mr. Camallo could keep you at five thousand dollars.
I was asking a question, how much did that report cost?
And, and while doing that, and, and while doing that, I think we need a, a process from Town Council about how this would play out.
Yep.
'Cause we're talking about kinda buying a building, but not really, 'cause we already got the building, we got the land, but the cost is gonna be like buying a new building or building a new building, if not more, because we're saving something. It's more expensive to save the front of that building than to tear it down and build a new one. That's the, I don't wanna do that, but that's, that's a fact. So we gotta figure all that out, and we need to have a process to figure that out, too. I think that's really important in this whole discussion, and it's kinda outside sort of the, the nuts and bolts of the building itself and the work, but if we can't figure that out, nothing's gonna happen, because it'll be difficult town meeting, get everyone to understand what we're doing.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Well, do you, do we think, does Mr. Camallo think, does the Permanent Building Committee think that we could get enough groundwork done, that we could get a, a sense of the actual cost for an adequate feasibility study to put a capital article on the, on the warrant?
That's what I'm saying, that's what we need to understand, because I think that's how it's gonna play out, yeah.
I mean, between now and, when's that all open? February, March?
I think that's how it'll end up.
I mean, there's gotta be some money needed, but you can't, you can't put on, you can't go to town meeting for money to do the actual construction till we first have an adequately professionally done study. But we could, we could have a capital article or free cash or whatever, if we could get that up by February, March.
That's what I'm not clear, how we, the process we would follow. Like, I get if we're building a new school, it's MSNBA, it's these guys, you know, there's a whole process that's very clear, but for this, it's kinda the same magnitude in some respects, certainly like the library magnitude anyway, but what's the process? I don't know. And I think that's where we have to go eventually, probably.
Right.
But let's understand that first.
And, and if I may, are the grants available for staving an old building and reusing it for something like that? There might be.
Oh, right, I think. I mean, we, we've had, we had some grant money from Mass Historic that did some of the rehab for Town Hall. The CPC funds that might be able to be used, you know, there are some other things to add that up.
But, but again, to Brian's point, we have to make sure that.
First, we gotta know. We're, we're. We're gonna know what the ask is first.
Could MESS do that? Mass do that?
What's that?
Could Mass do a feasibility study? Pro bono.
Okay.
But it, it, it sounds very similar to what we did with the DPW. We did a number of feasibility studies on, and then we looked at location as well, but on how we could build that building on that site, different configurations, and come up with what we felt was a, was a reasonable cost estimate that we could go to town meeting and ask for that money. But it didn't, it didn't happen quick.
What about rehabbing the old building at DPW?
Have you ever been in it?
It's an nice old building. It was great.
Perhaps if we get the ball rolling, you may get a better sense of what we need and what the steps are, but I think you have to, you know, the big ship can't be steered till it starts to move. We need, we need to get some movement.
Yeah, I don't wanna throw out a number, what we think we might need for a feasibility study tonight, 'cause you won't let us proceed, so.
Till you start to look at it.
Let's, let's move the ball kinda slowly and try to figure out what that is, and then we can come back to you after we've seen the architects' report and, and give you a better update on what you think the next step is. And we can even work on what that process is. We can work with Norman to figure out what that process is, so we can come back and educate everybody on that.
Now, I saw, Mr. Dubinsky had a remark in the back.
Yes, I just, Bob Dubinsky, Park and Rec, member liaison to the Reuse Committee. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the town manager, Dave Gatorio, and you folks for allowing us to continue our programming in the gym. A lot of the townspeople are still able to use that facility and expanding that to the, the classrooms as well for temporary meeting space, which is one of the things that the group had, a group had discovered there was a big need for. So any cooperation that you need from us as you continue to cooperate with Park and Rec, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, in the interest of time, I think the first one thing we need to do is simply to ask the, the PBC to take on the charge of studying this. One of the things do we need to be asking in our motion?
Yeah, wishing that, yeah, to have Mr. Camallo work with the PBC to study.
Correct.
The, the, the process, along with Town Council.
Right. Oops, squeaking.
Lighter tone.
All right. Would someone like to offer a motion based on our discussions? You can amend it if needs be.
Fire. So I'll move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Permanent Building Committee to, a request that the Permanent Building Committee work with the town manager, who is authorized by this motion, to, we request with our colleagues, right, to work with and coordinate, or not to work with, to coordinate, understanding the process and the dollar amount required for a full feasibility study of the Center School site and building. And that the Permanent Building Committee and the Town Manager's Office work with Town Council, and I keep emphasizing Town Council here, and it seems like the only one saying it, but work with Town Council to understand the process to bring a possible project to town meeting in the spring of, or, or a possible pro, pro, project or feasibility for a project to town meeting in the spring of 2019. Does that make sense?
Motion sound good, Mr. Camallo?
Yes.
Two.
Yeah, I, I think it is.
So, Dan, does that work for you, for your committee?
Yeah, I think, I think that encompasses enough.
It's pretty broad, intentionally.
It is, but.
And I think that addresses sort of this whole message concern that I've had that, or heard about, that five of you don't make this decision this big. That's, you know, and I say, of course, and they say, well, let's just make sure it's that way.
So could we hear that? So could we hear that motion, please?
Good luck.
Good luck.
The Board of Selectmen requests that PBC work with the town manager, who is authorized to coordinate with the PBC, to understand the process and the dollar amount required for a full feasibility study of the Center School, Center School site and building, and that the PBC and the town manager's office work with Town Council to understand the process to bring a possible project to town meeting in the spring of 2019, or a possible project or feasibility for a project.
Long motion.
Oh, good one.
I think you've got it like word for word, because it sounds kind of rambling and whatever.
And that was seconded, right? Okay, before we vote on it, all the members of the PBC are here. I know the captain is the guy in charge here, but I would like to just turn to the other members and ask if they have any questions or comments or input on what's been discussed so far. Gentlemen.
My sense is that your, the path of the proposal is the right path. We ultimately need a full feasibility study to understand the cost, understand which program fits where best, determine how you can use the town function most effectively. So that's, I think we're going to try to go, we're on the right path.
First order of business, get our hands on our original study.
You're good.
The only thing I'd, I'd suggest add into the motion is that somebody from, that we, the representative from the committee that actually did the work.
The reuse team?
Be part of that, to make sure that we're not reinventing the way it went anywhere else here, as we're looking at these issues.
Do you mean the reuse team, or?
The reuse team. And a number of them be a liaison to us, or whatever, only because.
Right, into the discussions.
They're more intimate with the process they went through. You wouldn't have twenty meetings, and I think it would be helpful to have them.
Do you want to pick your, do you want to pick your own, your own person, or do you want one of them to?
Someone to volunteer?
I don't know, they probably.
Got a couple right here, neither one's putting their hand up too quick.
We don't have to put them on the spot tonight.
Does that need to be in motion?
Did that person ever by chance be a police officer?
I think that can be just a recommendation that a liaison from the Center School team be included in the discussions, perhaps.
Yes.
Disunderstood. Okay. You're good, Mr. Kamala?
I think that's fair, and in fact, I was going to suggest that when we sit down with the permanent building committee, the permanent building committee is going to define a process for making this work, and obviously that will include consulting with the advisory team.
Okay. Okay, having said that, the motion is on the table, it has been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. It is unanimous. Dan, I hope you're willing to take on the charge.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, everybody.
All that time you have.
Well put.
All right.
This is specifically why the permanent building committee is a town.
Right.
Yeah, no, I think we're, it's, this is going to be a little slow to start for various reasons, but let's, we're on the right path. I think we're on the path to save the building, too, which is the most important thing here, just how we do this is.
Go start, go start the process.
There's going to be three steps forward, two back for a while here.
And I think a part of it was, to Norman's point, what is the building?
Yeah, right, right.
Define the building.
The building, and it might be true.
Is it just the old part, is it the old part in the, in the semi-old part, is the old part in the sorta-do part, the old part, the sorta-do part, and the?
And let's not get hamstrung by looking at this whole thing, you know, be free to think creatively about it.
Absolutely.
So, okay, finally, we have a joint, excuse me, we've done this one, Trails, Trails Authority. The Board of Selectmen will reconsider staff recommendations establishing a process and a structure for proposing, approving, managing, and funding town trails in Hopkinton. And I know that Mr. Kamala sent out only today some suggestions that had been pulled together. They're quite lengthy. Mr. Legoy also provided us with a great comparative study of a number of communities to give us a sense of what other towns are doing, how they're managing various issues, which is really, really valuable. I did have time to look at it and really appreciate having that. But, you know, Mr. Kamala and Lane, I think, are going to just give us an overview. The board needs to look at it more closely, it's quite lengthy. I was totally blown away when I first looked at it, till I looked back over Norman's email and recognized that he basically said, this is everything but the kitchen sink, it doesn't mean we have to do all these things, we just threw everything in, because I for once said, oh, my gosh, I would never sign up for that board, it was terrifying. But Mr. Kamala, tell us what you've got so far, and let's kick it around a little.
Yeah, through the chair, a couple things need to be said. First off, this is a topic that has received tremendous and high-quality input from different town entities, beginning with the letter and suggested charge that was submitted by the Upper Charles Trails Committee. We also have been in conversations with Peter Legoy's team, that did a fantastic job compiling information from comparative towns. And thirdly, we also had a very good meeting with Mike Bolson, the individual who is the spark plug behind maintaining trails and trails in town. So again, this is a topic that has received tremendous interest and high-quality support from different entities in town. What we suggested to the board, as the chair stated, is the full menu of what the board may consider in answering some of the questions that have, that have come up over the, over the years. Let me begin by talking about the purpose, and I'm walking you through the document that I shared with the board this, this, this morning. When we were looking at the purpose, we specifically wanted to identify the overarching goals that the board could pursue in looking at this matter. The first being, there are several questions that have come up to the board.
I'll get it.
And also to Town Hall regarding trails. And we understand that, given the fact that we have different entities in town that handle trail issues, we have entities that are focusing on specific projects, like the Upper Charles Trails Committee. We have private, non-town trail organizations. We also have, through different regulatory processes in town, have identified and created trails, and thus, the idea is, is this the opportunity to create a one-stop shop that will address trail issues? The decision for the board is, if that's the way to go, decide on the scope and charge for that entity. Decide also on whether the entity will be providing recommendations and advice to the Board of Selectmen. In arriving at this question, I did consider, and Landon did, a great amount of work on this. We did consider the fact that various town entities control and manage parcels on which trails exist. You have the Conservation Commission, you also have the Open Space and Preservation Commission, you have the Park and Rec Commission, as well as trails that may be on land that is under CR, and most of our CR, CRs, conservation restrictions are held by Halt and other entities. So the idea again here is, in terms of an overarching purpose, identify a committee that will become the one-stop shop for all matters regarding trails, and whether, and the board will need to decide on whether that committee would be advisory in nature, or will report directly to the Board of Selectmen as the chief elected board, or will report separately to the different entities that I've identified. And then second issue we considered was the fact that we have had different organizations and entities create trails as community assets on the ground. There are public trails, private trails, all created differently. And thus, we need an entity that then builds a common vision around this asset.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Thirdly, as we all know, there are different users on trails, and thus, questions, issues, conflicts, and opportunities or desires to share knowledge does exist, and therefore, well, the board may look into creating an entity that will now focus on reconciling the conflicting interests, whether it's in terms of the users of the trails, or it's in terms of impacts. Trails exist within a specific environment, they are neighbors, they are natural resources that the town or the community may want to protect. And then also, nothing, one way of addressing sustainability is to make sure that you have a structure that addresses all matters regarding trails. And thus, part of, one of the overarching goals in terms of purpose is to define a governance structure that would therefore institutionalize trail management, trail planning, trail development as part of our local government and community building process. And also, because we have different entities that have an interest in trails, it's important to have an entity that will then act as a liaison between all these different entries, entities. For example, the Upper Charles Trails Committee has a specific charge to complete a trail that connects from the Milford Town Line through the town to the Ashland Town Line. They are going to continue to do that work. We also, as I said, have trails that are on private land. There are trails that have been created through the town meeting process that may not be connected to the Upper Charles Trails Committee. And so, you, we need an entity that will act as a liaison between the Board of Selectmen and every other stakeholder in this process. It's important to have a purpose, but the purpose cannot take you to the next level where you achieve your aspirations if you don't have specific goals. And therefore, goals for such an entity could be, as I said earlier, have a single point of reference for groups that are working on trails. The town has always emphasized process. We need processes in town that are user-friendly. We need processes that are open and transparent and accessible to all, and so that should be one of the goals for this process. We need to establish a brand. We have high-quality trails in town, I've been on most of the trails, and clearly, trails are part of our branding. I'm reminded of one instance where I visited a new resident in town, and as we were talking as to why they came, they chose Hopkinton as a place to live, one of the reasons was that they moved out of Boston to this, to this community because of the town trails. They can walk their dog, they can walk with their family, and they can also, they also invite other people from out of town to come and enjoy this wonderful asset in the community. And so clearly, trails are part of our branding, fostering community engagement. We have seen some of the conversations that have been escalated to the Board of Selectmen, where clearly the community is looking for opportunities to have their voices heard, their suggestions heard, their concerns addressed. And also sustainability. Sustainability is part and parcel of our values, and clearly, I think one of the goals for this entity would be to make sure that whatever projects move forward are sustainable. And then, we have to comply with town plan regulations and rules, and we have seen some of the conversations that have been brought to the board's attention. For example, there are questions regarding whether parking provided meets with the, meets the regulations and guidelines for establishing parking. We have had questions that ask whether in building some of the bridges for our trails, whether we've complied with the Conservation Commission regulations. And finally, because, because the work of this committee would be advisory in nature, we are suggesting that one of the objectives is to make sure that the committee or the entity that moves what does not have any policymaking authority, that at least most of the discussions are escalated to the chief elected board in town. Specific duties, I gave you everything.
You did.
Yeah. Stretching from, you know, designing, developing, managing trails, to actually developing standards for the trails. And clearly, this process will require consultations with the planning board, Conservation Commission, and other entities in town. And then finally, our outline touches on the project approval process, as well as resources required. This is a very interesting topic in terms of what is the, what is the process that the town can put in place to move forward the discussion on trails. I think the following are important. Number one, as I said, it's important that the trails group coordinates with the planning board and the Conservation Commission in defining the standards for citing and designing trails. Number two, it's important to continue to assure the residents that when, when trail projects move forward, that we will comply, and will comply with the town's regulations, and permits that are required will be sought and discussed in public. It's also important that we, we identify work that needs to be done with our permits. For example, I have had Mike in the office, working with Landon, projects such as clearing brush, blazing, tree pruning, maintenance of erosion control structures. Let's find a way to exempt those tasks and ensure efficiencies in terms of when they need to be done, they get done. Coordination with private land owners, I think that's very important, that has to be part of the process for approving trail projects. And then, I've also offered that there are private trails, trails that are created outside town processes or town entities. We will need to define a process for those projects. My suggestion is that whatever group is put in place should make a finding on those projects and then report to the Selectmen. Some of these projects may not require any town board, any review by a town board or commission, however, by the end of the day, if we're looking at creating a common trail system, it's important that we share information. And then, there's a question regarding trails occurring on land that is controlled by other town entities. Usually, we would like those entities to make the final decision, and thus, what we're presenting is that when those proposals are met to the entity controlling any parcel in town, that that decision be final. And this is also consistent with some issues that have come up, i.e., where a town meeting has decided on investing on a particular trail, we don't want this process to be used to undo a town meeting vote without going through town meeting. We also want to make sure that, and this is based on some of the questions that we've received, we want to make sure that, following approval of any trail, that we have town staff continue to participate in the construction and implementation, to make sure that the construction is by the plans that are approved by the town. There's also the issue regarding resolving complaints and concerns. I'm suggesting that we may not have an immediate answer to that question, and therefore, one way to address this issue is to, is to perhaps charge the entity that will focus on trails with developing a process for resolving complaints and concerns. with developing a process for resolving complaints and concerns that are raised by neighbors. Resources, clearly, this work would not be done without volunteers. We need a formal structure where the town creates some group to focus on trails. This could be a five-member board or any number of, any number of positions that the board deems necessary. Clearly, the work that we have seen requires coordination with staff. We'll need to find a way to identify some staff person at town hall to support the work of this group. And then finally, we have to comply with procurement laws. And thus, we're suggesting that consultants for projects on trails will be appointed by the town manager as the chief, as the town's chief procurement officer. So, in a nutshell, that's what we're putting forth in terms of purpose, to bring our goals, work to be done, and processes that need to be in place to resolve some of the issues that have come forth to this board for discussion.
That was so succinct.
How about establishing a budget for maintenance and development and maintenance? It's time we spend some money on our trails in Hopkinton annually. It's part of our...
I can't believe that Mr. Bolson has, and the volunteers have done such a great job keeping them up that people actually think that we have a budget to take care of our trails and we don't. And this is something that I've been asking for, for a few years now, as you know, and it keeps getting dropped from the budget at the last minute.
I think the fundamental question, as we try to move some sort of centralized oversight forward, is, does that centralized oversight authority have decision-making power? Or is it advisory and we still have a decision-making power? I mean, that's kind of the ultimate question here. I think we're going to need a budget. If we want to do this right, we need some money and we need, we need management controls. And that's kind of what we're talking about for all of it. How we get there, I mean, there's a lot of work to be done. And I'm sure Mr. Kamal and Elaine and others will get it done. But really, I think from our perspective is, you know, to what level do we want to wash our hands of this? Or, not wash our hands, but turn it over to others? Or do we want to hang on to the final decision-making? Like we're doing with Upper Charles Trail. I mean, they do a ton of work and they're dedicating a great number of volunteer hours. But we still have the decision-making authority.
Perfect, if I may, to the chair. I think that's a perfect example. You know, where we, we help them with the, with the policy. And, or the same way with the Marathon Fund. They vet out the stuff and then this stuff comes to us. If it comes to signing off money to buy something or do something, it just comes to us. And they've already vetted it through the, through their committee. And then, it's presented to us and we decide whether or not it's worthy.
Well, I had some, you know, early observations as I read this through. And I, and I recognize, I was actually relieved when Mr. Kamala said, "Look, I'm, you know, I'm giving you the full Monty." Doesn't necessarily mean we're doing all this stuff. Couple of things that stood out to me is, one, I want to recognize that we have some excellent, excellent volunteers and excellent work that's done in this town by these different committees. And some of this stuff is complicated and they're doing it every day. And I don't want to diminish that. I don't want to lose that. I am always in favor of volunteer work. I'm always in favor of keeping valuable resources and building on them. But I don't want to either throw the baby out with the bathwater or lose the good work and the expertise that's being done by these entities already. They know this subject intimately. There's a lot of groundwork, no pun intended, that's already been done in these areas. So, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel here. But what I heard and where, why I think we are taking this up now is there was a feeling on a lot of people that with all these different entities, there was a lack of coordination, a lack of transparency, perhaps not intentional, but just you had the right hand not always knowing what the left hand is doing. There was no clear lines of reporting or authority. People, if they had a concern, weren't sure who to go to or who could have a decision-making capacity. And I do think that the idea of visioning, of a master plan, of an overall vision that everybody can look at and see meets this need for transparency. When I looked at some of the work that Peter Legoy did, surveying some of the other communities and a lot of cases, you know, the selectmen doesn't, don't need to get too deep into the weeds. And we shouldn't be having all these small, you know, things for adjudication brought to us. These should be handled at lower levels. And, you know, the selectmen get involved if it's, as his document referred to, it's a global level. But in more, more cases than not, these different entities dealt with it as best they could. And if not, then it got kicked up to a higher level. So, I would like to see something where we, and I don't want to add town costs either. That's another thing. We've done great stuff with volunteerism and we can continue to do that as much as possible. I would like to see something where we build on the existing expertise of existing groups that are already doing this. And we have it under a consistent whole, a committee that doesn't necessarily do the down and dirty. But we have a consistent system. We have a consistent marking method. We have a vision that the town can see as a whole. And when issues are not, we have some policies. When issues cannot be resolved at the immediate level, it goes to this committee. And then if, in those rare, hopefully rare instances where something really is intractable, it comes up to this board. But I just think there needs to be a system for coordination and transparency, really using and valuing the great wealth of expertise and ability that we already have. Because the kind of stuff that gets done, the amount of time that's put in, I think you'd be hard-pressed to reinvent a whole new committee of people that either have the ability or the time or the enthusiasm to do what some of these groups are already doing. So, I want to improve upon it, but I don't want, I don't want to reinvent things. But that's...
So, I would suggest that we create a new committee, the Hopkinton Trails Committee, appointed by the Hopkinton Board of Selectmen. And that Hopkinton Trails Committee be seven people. I'm just throwing out numbers here. And those seven people, one comes from the Upper Charles Trails Committee. One comes from the, I don't know all the different entities in town.
Open space.
Open space. One comes from the Trails Club. I mean, that's just a club of people, but they know who they are. And we reach out to them and appoint one of them. So, we build a committee of one, meaning one committee, that takes in that expertise that you're describing and makes that one committee the authority over all the other activities of the trails in town. I do think, however, that that committee needs to have a budget. I think it is time we create a budget in Hopkinton, a line item in the budget for trail maintenance and development. Mostly maintenance and maybe development can be separate and we could do separate articles if need be. But I think a single committee made up of experts from the various other committees is the way to go forward and enhance and enact a lot of the stuff that's on that list. Obviously, with the town manager working to set this whole thing up.
But as an overarching committee, I still would like to see the individual committees or groups that have done such a good job continue to be able to develop. But bring them to an oversight committee to make sure that it all fits together.
Yeah, well, that's why we appoint one person from each committee.
Right. But we keep those...
So, maybe we have five on there. There are one from each committee, depending on how many entities there are. And the people in the room could tell us how many entities there are. And then we have two at-large members, who are just citizens that want to get involved in town government. Something like that.
Yeah, Mr. Kamala, if I may, to the chair, Mr. Kamala had five down here. Concom, Parks and Rec Planning Board. And then, I believe, those were three. And then, and then, we're also Upper Charles.
Upper Charles.
And Trails Club.
Trails Club.
And that's the five.
Open space.
But Halt, do we need Halt? No?
I mean, who are the, who are the key stakeholder groups around trails in Hopkinton?
We have the list. I'll give you the list.
Can we ask, can we ask Peter or some of you guys that are out here that have done this for years?
Halt, yeah.
Okay, so Halt, six.
And then at-large.
We need at least an at-large.
There's one at-large.
Open space right now is three people, but I think they could have increased value, get increased work as part of the trails committee. Right now, they're not doing that much. I guess controls and land are not really clear there with the bylaws. They don't have that much to do right there. One thing I would suggest...
Move up here so they can see you at home.
We've got to give other people a chance if they have other opinions.
One thing I might suggest changing to what Brian was talking about is one of the issues we all get into, you guys in particular. I'm not on any committees, so I'm lucky for that. But, you know, someone from Concom is appointed to, you know, has to be on six other committees. So, what I would suggest is that rather than requiring a member to be from Concom, that Concom and each of these committees can appoint someone.
Yeah, I think it said designate, designate.
That's fine. That's fine, I get it.
And I think what's really important with that is that that person designated active interest in trails and developing, maintaining.
Either a member of that committee or they're designated. That's how we word it. That makes sense. Good point.
It's more important for that person to be active, have time available than actually...
So, do we have nine on...
So, nine, nine's getting to be too many. I mean, this is...
Nine's in the Upper Charles.
Seven's a good number.
I like seven.
Seven's a good number.
So, would we have this committee then create its own dispute resolutions and its own process for how we go about dealing with butter issues and everything?
They vote everything like a public meeting. And when they can't make a decision or it turns into a political football and...
Then they come here.
People's throwing stuff at each other, then it comes here. But Marathon Fund Committee, I mean, that was a great example. Marathon Fund Committee is five people, I believe. And they have a budget, meaning we get a bunch of money, excess money from the BAA, from the marathon each year. So, they know what they can do with that money to a certain extent. And they make all the decisions and they vet it all out and they get pricing and all that. And then they come to us and they show this form they fill out. And they say, "We want to do this and this is the price. Please approve it." And we approve it. So, it's two tiers of management oversight. I think the same thing would be really effective for trails.
In fact, in the first instance, the group will recommend regulations, standards for adoption by the Board of Selectmen.
So, we've been very fortunate so far for so long that we have people like this that are volunteering. But we can't always depend on these guys volunteering. And as, as people drop off, there aren't always people that are willing to jump in and help out. So, you know, we'd be foolish not to try to take advantage of these guys as much, and girls, as much as we can, as quickly as we can, and then get something up and running. So, there is a cohesive unit that oversees everything and there's no gray area. But I think we need to do it posthaste. I don't think we can drag our feet on this.
Every other community that we looked at had a trails committee. The reporting structure changed a little bit with different, in different communities. But at the end of the day, sort of what you've been talking about here is kind of how that worked. It was, they were the one-stop shop. But then they cooperated with town staff, with other committees in town to make trails work. You know, in some cases, Concom owned the land where a trail was going. So, they had to make that cooperation. And then maintenance might be volunteer groups or a steward who's in charge of that process. But maybe on a bigger issue, DPW would come in and help out. So, they, they all sort of had a general framework that worked and was consistent with kind of what you're talking about and what Norman's put together here.
Look for other comments. I see Mr. Sonnet had his hand up, other people up in the audience as well. Eric?
This is great that you're having this conversation. It truly is.
Sit there where they can hear you on the mic.
Your voice doesn't carry.
Your voice doesn't carry. He's a shy type.
You don't have a booming voice.
It's upgraded since my day. As Vice Chair of the Upper Charles Committee, we find ourselves in the same position that I find myself in on the Historic Committee Commission, in that people don't understand all the committees with the same name. For example, on Historic Committee Commission...
See, even you don't understand the name.
On the Historic Commission, people think we're the Historic Society. They think we're the Historic District Commission. And all of that funnels helter-skelter. The same thing is happening with trails. Upper Charles, every time there's a trails issue, the people come to Upper Charles because we're commonly referred to as the Trails Committee.
Visible to.
Right, we're there. And we're official, which is a good thing. If I were in your position, I would look at how you've structured the Upper Charles Trails Committee with the same budgetary discretion and you've given Upper Charles a mission with guidelines on how to do it. And you've maintained the final decisions for the Board of Selectmen based on what we bring you. I would do the same thing with trails. Have literally the same structure. Keep it simple. Don't go off in all kind of directions. I think what Peter's done, getting all this other town stuff, is great because I want to see it. Maybe we can upgrade or change some things in Charles. The issue, though, is absolutely critical. The trails in this town are a major asset that are not being managed in a cohesive way. It's a helter-skelter thing. Guys like Mike Bolson and Peter and, and I could name, my God, so many people that are involved. Even Tim Kildoff today is worried about a cross-country thing behind the middle school. You know, I mean, it's a major, major issue. The more structure you give to it, the more budget, the more direction to let them go do their thing, I think we will be rewarded from it.
Transparency too. Transparency.
Well, clearly. But direction and transparency. Give the direction to the committee of what you're visioned and what they're charged with. And then let them do their thing. There's enough talent, enough people to volunteer. As soon as you create that committee, you're going to have so many people want to get on it, you're not going to know what to do with them all. That's my opinion, but I've seen it in virtually every committee we've ever formed that build it and they will come and take advantage of it.
But, you know, Mr. Sonnet being here representing Upper Charles is, you know, perfect example of my feeling about keeping the existing wonderful resources that we have, human resources, in place. Because, you know, I had the privilege the other day of taking a field trip ride with Jane Moran through the Upper Charles and all the areas that are under consideration. And the amount of knowledge and the amount of work that that one board has put in is amazing, including all kinds of ongoing negotiations with various property owners and things, you know, that might or might not. But these are relationships and expertise that's been built over time. And we want to keep, we don't need to start reinventing the wheel when we've got this, these valuable resources. We can build on it. But we should, we should really value and continue to use what we have. And Upper Charles Trails is a perfect example.
So, anything that we would put in place tonight is not etched in stone forever. So, I think we could go ahead and get a motion on the table to create the Hopkinton Trails Oversight Committee and start to build what the charge is going to be. And then we can come back in future meetings and tweak it as need be, based on input from the folks that may get put on the committee, based on input from the town manager, based on input we here in the community, et cetera. But I'm of the thought that it's time to like, put something in place, like make a motion.
My feeling, I don't know whether other members of the board had time to read all this document that was sent just this morning. It's very lengthy, it's very involved. I would rather take this morgue's board approach rather than, as Mr. Kamala described, eating the entire cow. I'd like to see this scaled down to something that is simpler. And a lot of these tasks, I think, are already being done. And I don't think we need a committee to start doing some of this. Need, grit, it needs to be more... It needs to be more, as you described, more of an overarching committee. So what was put out today, I think, needs more than a tweak. I mean, we could, or we could just create the entity in name and then flesh it out afterwards, but I think we need something to vote on that's a little more succinct.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we finalize the charge tonight, I'm just suggesting we get it going. And I, I agree, there's a lot of detail in there.
Just put the name out there.
I'm glad you read it, I did not.
Yeah, well.
I looked at it, said I'm not reading that.
Yes.
I don't need to read that, though, because my job is not to get into the nitty-gritty. My job is to set the policy and the motion in place, I think, for Mr. Kamala and his team to then be successful. So, and I think they will be. So I, I do think we could create the Hopkinton Trails Oversight Committee tonight. I do think we could name the number of people that would serve on that committee, which I believe seven's a good number. And I think we could name the various entities that we'll either appoint, have a representative or appoint a designee to serve on that committee, and then that committee could then convene, and that committee could then work with the town manager's office to begin to draft their view of the charge, and then that would be the next step that we could take at this level, is to confirm or affirm the charge that they create, with the understanding that we're looking for a single authority to act like the Marathon Fund Committee and maintain the funds, maintain the trails, just like the Fund Committee does, in the town of Hopkinton, and to bring forward to the Board of Selectmen for final approval their recommendations to invest and maintain the trails, something like that. I mean, that's, that's all we've got to do tonight, but that gets the ball rolling because we've been talking about this for a while.
Well, with all respect, Mr. Herr, we're not going to start appointing anybody until we have a full-fleshed-out charge. Personally, I would feel more comfortable maybe waiting one more meeting and seeing if the next meeting, we can have something that's scaled down and a bit, a bit more of an outline than what we've got today. I just, I would like to see something like one document that we're looking at.
I think we can appoint people without having the charge worked out, but that would depend on our colleagues in a vote.
Mr. Kamala?
If I may, through the chair, I think putting the two concepts together, here's what you get. There is clear direction today that we're moving forward considering creating a trails group. So that, that is clear to us. What is also clear is the, the scope of the charge that can be created, and so we, we can quickly work on a charge. I think what is also important is that we consult with other entities that are impacted by this discussion, and I think it's always easier, Brian, to have conversations with other entities if, if we can make them feel that they are part of creating the charge. So my suggestion is.
Fair point.
Combine the two ideas. There's clear direction and intent by the Selectmen that we keep moving forward.
Yeah.
We will work on a draft charge, consult with everybody else so that at least when we, we bring the charge to the Selectmen, we can say, we've spoken with ConSCOM, we've spoken with Open Space, we've spoken with Planning Board, we've spoken. One, one other constituency that we, we haven't mentioned so far are the private associations where trails have been created. I count it no less than 11 associations. So I, I think the, the board's intent is clear, there's a process and due diligence that we need to make, and we can do that as quickly as possible and come back to the board.
So I would be okay with that.
I feel better with that.
And my only caution would be, that sounds like lots of weeks of chit-chat, and maybe months. And so then I'm concerned that we're just going to keep talking about this and revisit it three months from now or six months from now. So that's my only concern with that. You just named a lot of people, a lot of personalities and a lot of opinions. So we've got to be careful that we don't, we can't be afraid to make a decision because everybody doesn't get a chance to weigh in, but I think a reasonable timeframe for people to weigh in, once you let them know if they have an opinion, now's the time to share it. I'm okay with that.
Mr. Sonnet?
Why don't you form an interim committee of maybe the town manager and two or three people, maybe someone from Upper Charles, Peter, someone else to look at the smorgasbord that Norman's come up with, prioritize it, and hopefully end up with something that's manageable and workable.
Yeah.
You would still make the decision.
Yeah.
But it would take that process from what could be months into weeks.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Again, I don't think the board needs to formally make that recommendation. Our intent is to quickly go back to the resources that we've been using, utilize your connections, your networks to coordinate the meetings with the other group. I really want this decision to be the Selectmen's decision.
Sure.
But Brian's right, though. I mean, you're, you've, you've got, you've got something here that could expand exponentially in a waste of time.
Yeah. Always.
So you can't let that happen, Norman.
Exactly. We will, I'll be asking for your help.
We're good with, with seven members or the designee, and we named, named the seven groups.
Well, Mr. Bolson.
Well, I guess we're going to hold off doing that.
Yes, hold off.
Okay, I was wondering, that we, that we didn't just churn something again today.
We've got a format on that right now with the Upper Charles.
You know, but, but right now, we just, again, to your point, all we did was churn it and we talked about it again. I've been doing this for three years now. Three years. We talked, three years ago, we came up with this, with this draft for a Trails Committee out of the Upper Charles Committee, and, and now we're going back, we're coming up on January again. And I just, I don't want to lose it.
All right.
I don't want to lose it, but, you know, I don't know how much more energy Mike Bolson has to keep cleaning the trails.
No. Mr. Bolson, yes?
Mike Bolson, Ten Comma. It's hard to simplify. It's hard enough as it is, and now to simplify it is, we're not there. I mean, we're, we're going to trim any fat. It's, it's taken time, a lot of time to get this far, and how can we simplify it?
Well, I, I think what I was talking about when I mentioned simplify, you haven't had the privilege of reading the document that Norman sent. It is everything but the kitchen sink, including, to my interpretation, putting on this proposed committee, a lot of the actual groundwork that is actually being done already, and that's what I mean by simplify, that we can strip down a lot of this and say, this is already being done, we just need a board that oversees and coordinates and, and, you know, is less, is less detail involved.
And the committee could simplify.
Simplify the charge for the committee and leave a lot of the down, dirty work.
And do everything that's there and then decide what's important and what's not.
Keep a lot of the day-to-day work in the hands of the existing groups that are doing, that have the knowledge.
But, but, yeah, what worries me is what Norman said, we're going to go back and we're going to ask Concom again, we're going to ask, we're going to ask Parks and Rec again, we're going to ask the Planning Board again, we're going to ask Upper Charles again. And, and I don't know how, to Mr. Bolson's point, I don't know how many more times we can churn this, churn the same document. And, you know, if, if, maybe we, we, we give a charge, you know, and then, to Mr. Bolson's point, have the committee themselves say, well, you know, we, we really can't do this, we really can't do that. I'm just worried about it.
Would you feel better if we set a time that we get this back on the next agenda and that, that night we're making decisions, at least to start, if we can't do it tonight? Would that be all right?
I'd feel better about that.
I, I didn't see, from what Mr. Kamala says, maybe you have more, more, you know, history of knowledge than I do. I didn't see that this was going to go off into space and go on forever, but just that we needed to hone this down, have a little clearer outline of what we're voting on, and sending to these other committees for comment as a courtesy because it impacts them, but I certainly.
No, no, they've been, they've been contacting.
Okay.
Three years ago, we started contacting these other committees. The Trails Club has had input, the Upper Charles has had input, Concom has, everybody's had input to, into, into all of this. That's why it's so thick.
You got a date for us, Mr. Kamala?
Peter?
Claire, one, one possible way of addressing this is I think, and what I, what I in this, you know, I, I put together a small, or Trails Club put together a small group, seven people, and we.
Yeah.
We looked at a bunch of different towns, and what sort of fell out from that was, and some of it had to do with what Brian had tasked the town manager with doing, but really you're looking at development of trails, dealing with sort of general Trail Committee process issues, and that includes dealing with the butters' concerns.
Yep.
And then finally is maintenance. And maybe the thing to look at is coming up with a more general charge that kind of spells out those three things, but the specifics maybe is something that's for a later date, and we may not know all the specifics right at this point. That Trails Committee is, you know, to Eric's point, what we want is a Trails Committee that everyone knows to go, when they have a trail issue, whatever that is.
Right.
If it's because the dogs are using the trail too much, they go to the Trail Committee as the, you know, one-stop shop.
Exactly, yeah.
So that's really the key, and then maybe the charge is really down a little too much in the weeds at this point. Maybe you guys can be looking at saying, what's the overall policy we're looking at getting here, you know, at the broad brush, at the, at the higher level and look the committee getting into the weeds.
I, I agree, Peter, but in deference to the chair and to Mr. Kamala, they're looking for a little more time to get a little bit more detailed work done.
Yeah.
And I'm okay with that, if, but I don't want this to, to Mr. Kamala.
How much time?
And I don't want this to go on. I want a date on a next, what, what agenda can we get this on? I know they're looking at the calendar over here, but they won't cough up a date just yet.
We have the 13th and the 27th.
Of?
November.
That quickly.
So we prefer the 27th.
Smart man.
14th it is.
I'll be good with that. We prefer the 27th, at least it gives us enough time to consult with.
If we want to table this until November 27th and then.
Do, do the 27th. In that time, reach out to those couple of other entities that you mentioned, should at least touch base with and say, we're going to decide, we're going to talk about this on the 27th, so speak now. And to our other board members who haven't had a chance to read through all this, just to get a sense, I would ask everybody to look at it so we all understand.
I don't need to read it, I get the whole thing that's in there we've been talking about for 10 years. I would like to put out there, though, that on the 27th, we're not going to talk about it again, we're going to put on the agenda to vote, to create.
And maybe give more than 15 minutes on the agenda, because we are well over an hour overdue from our agenda right now.
Well, I just didn't have 15 minutes.
Just did.
I shouldn't have had 15 minutes.
Just did. 15 to 30.
That's too short. Anyway, okay. All right. Are we comfortable putting it off that far and you guys fleshing this out a little bit better into something we can really take a vote on?
We're going to.
All right.
Thank you.
Trails, trash and trees, here we go.
Trees, okay. And Peter, thank you so much for this overview, too. That was really helpful.
Yeah.
Really, really helpful.
Yeah, it's kind of. We wanted to get that in measure for ourselves.
Yep.
So.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay. That went long, but it needed to be discussed. So finally, we come to the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Kamala, what do you have to share with us tonight?
Expanding on the comment, I think, that was shared by Bob Dubinsky earlier. Town staff is in conversations with parks and recreation regarding the current use of the gym, as well as the potential to expand park and rec programming and to bring in outside entities as well as gain access to the classrooms. No decisions have been made at this point, we're exploring that opportunity.
I, I would caution, the gym use is not changing, so building code was, I don't think should be impacted necessarily about the gym use, but those classrooms, that use is changing, and I'd be very careful because that could be a significant liability for the community if something were to go wrong and we weren't fully lined up with state and federal law for use, change of use requirements.
Yeah. That's the point, that's part of the conversation.
Yeah.
Okay. Nothing more?
Nothing more at this point.
Okay.
Good one.
All right. Then we will move to board liaison reports and board invites.
So I would like to talk, just for less than 30 seconds, that the dedication to the DPW is this weekend, Saturday, 9:00 AM, at the, obviously at the new DPW. I'm definitely going to be going to that.
Nine o'clock.
Nine AM.
O'clock.
Zero, 900.
Other members?
I'll be there also. I just, I, I, since on a liaison report, I just want to remind all the, my Mo-bros out there that it is Movember coming up. I cheated a little bit, started two days early because I didn't want to look like I just didn't shave today. But, you know, it's important to raise awareness of men's health issues, such as prostate cancer, men's suicide and testicular cancer. The Movember Foundation runs the Movember Charity Event, and the goal of Movember is to change the face of men's health by encouraging men to get involved. Aim's to increase early cancer detection, diagnosis and effective treatment, and ultimately reduce the number of preventable deaths. So everybody, get, get aware of your family history and try and adopt a healthier lifestyle. Grow a stash.
And grow a mustache.
Is Movember like stash month?
It's Movember, and it's.
Movember.
We've done it for, we've done it for years and years. For people like me, that's like discriminatory.
Yeah, you can't grow a mustache. You look like Sidney Crosby in the playoffs.
One thing I'd like to bring up is, this past week has been tragic.
Yes.
We had two shootings, and I just want to put it out there that, you know, from the Board of Selectmen, that our hearts and prayers are with the victims in Pittsburgh and Kentucky as well.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. I just wanted to mention two things because we will, by the time we meet again, Veterans Day will have come and, come and gone. Remind everyone of our annual Veterans Day ceremonies, which are held at the Senior Center, which will occur on Veterans Day, and also to draw attention to another very nice veterans event. Our Girl Scout troop is running an event at the Hopkinton Library on November 10th at 2:00 PM, and this is what it means to serve our country. It is a panel discussion with five of our Hopkinton veterans, and it is moderated by our own Ben Polico, who is himself a veteran of the US Navy. So a very nice, a very nice event honoring our veterans on November 10th at the library at 2:00.
Madam Chair, one more thing. Early voting is going on here in Hopkinton, so remember, everybody, midterm elections, get out there and vote, and then vote before 8:00 PM on November 6th.
It's 2:00, Claire?
It is 2:00 on November 10th at the Hopkinton Library, what it means to serve our country. Panel discussion with Hopkinton veterans, five Hopkinton veterans, and Ben. Future agenda items, anyone? Brian?
I think we're talking about trails at some point in there.
And no, and I would, I would like to talk about trees and tree trimming and.
Trash contract up there.
And the DPW, I, we're still waiting to see the, the strategic plan from, for, oh, maybe, well, we'll, we'll be there on, on Saturday. I can ask the, if you don't mind, I can ask the director of DPW, because we're still waiting to see where that, where the, where trees fit in, before they, they come up again and start asking us if, what we're going to do about the, the limbs that are still falling down from the, from last spring and all that. We've got to get on that.
So Saturday is kind of a focused event.
No, I know, I'm causing trouble, I'm causing trouble. No, but, but again, I've been, I've been on this one for, what, about six months, I've been asking for this to get on the agenda.
In, in fact, through the chair, on that point, we creatively identified a private partner, and I'm going to be sending an email where several students are going to be cleared in town at no cost to the taxpayer.
So that, so we'll, we'll, we'll get more information at a future meeting or something?
In other words, both on the ground, what doing the work?
Just on the ground.
Anyone else? Future items?
Yeah.
We're all good? I have one thing I would like to bring up. We all received a very nice notice that at a recent Veterans Service Conference, our Metro West Veterans Service District was honored by receiving the Veterans District of the Year Award, which is a great honor for our service to veterans, and so I would, they were honored for outstanding service. And Sarah Bateman is the Director of Veterans Services for the Metro West. I would like to schedule a time for Sarah to come in to tell us what the district does for the veterans and to. for the veterans and to honor her for our district getting this, this very outstanding honor for, for excellent veteran services. So perhaps we can do that in the near future. All right. Seeing no other items to be discussed, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, and
Thank you.
there are some things to sign right here, don't go.
Go to bed.